The City of Boston zoning vote of appeal hearing date on July 12th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15, 2022. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom WebEx Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. May I ask Ms. Ambassador to see if everybody can be muted because I hear an echo? The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices pages, page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The Chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand, and press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, press *9 to raise and lower your hand, and *6 to unmute yourself if you are connected by telephone. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Please lower your hand immediately after you've spoken. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. So let's get started. Let me take a roll call of Mr. Fortune.
I'm here, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Olick.
Here, here.
I hear you have a growly throat with, um, cold or something.
Yes, I am.
Ms. Dong.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Regiro.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Legris.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. So in conformance with the Open Meeting Law, after each vote, after each presentation, and we're ready to get ready for a vote, I'm going to take a roll call of each member for their, for, to register their voice vote. Okay? So it'll take us a little bit longer, but it will keep the record clear. Mr. Hampton.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Okay, Mr. Fortune, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trying to get my video. You can hear my audio, but try to get the video up. I'm taking care of here. So the first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of June 7th of 2022. We need a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All those in, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And obviously, I have to get in the mode, Mr. Fortune.
Approve.
Mr. Olick.
Approve.
Ms. Dong.
Approve.
Ms., Mr. Regiro.
Approve.
Ms., Mr. Robinson.
Approve.
Mr. Legris.
Approve.
I too am in support, so the motion carries.
Case for extension calling BOA 579-100, 931 Bennington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Attorney Lawrence Patino covering for Attorney Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding 931 Bennington Street, the Board originally granted relief for this matter on July 13th of 2018. The Board has since granted two extensions of that relief that expire on July 13th of 2022. The first extension, however, was not necessary because COVID tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, the expiration of the original grant of relief should have been October 18, 2021. However, the Board granted a second extension of relief until July 13, 2022. I recommend that the Board confirm for the record that this extension encompassed all tolling. The applicant now requests an additional extension until July 13, 2023. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it determines, determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that this is the only, this is only the applicant's second necessary extension.
May I have a motion, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I will move to confirm that relief is valid through July 13, 2022, including any and all applicable tolling, and further move to grant an additional extension of relief through July 13, 2023, of course, including any and all applicable tolling.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Approve.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so the motion carries.
Thank, thank you. Good to have you today.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 788-662-587, Albany Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Drago Antiscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street on behalf of 587 Albany Street.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding to 587 Albany Street, the Board originally granted relief for this matter on August 23rd of 2018. The Board has since granted two extensions of that relief that expired on August 23rd of 2022. The first extension, however, was not necessary because COVID tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, the expiration of the original grant of relief should have been November 28, 2021. However, the Board granted a second extension of relief until August 23rd of 2022. I recommend that the Board confirm for the record that this extension encompassed all tolling. The applicant now requests an additional extension until August 23rd of 2023. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that it's only the applicant's second necessary extension.
Motion, please.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I hereby move to confirm that relief is valid through August 23rd, 2022, including any and all applicable tolling. I further move that an additional extension is granted for relief through August 23rd of 2023, which of course will include any and all applicable tolling.
Uh, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 874-954, 303 to 305 Bennington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning once again, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Matt Ekel with the business address of 11 Beacon Street on behalf of 303, 305 Bennington Street.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding to 303, 305 Bennington Street, the Board originally granted this relief on July 12, 2019, and the Board granted its first extension of relief until July 12, 2022. However, that first extension was not necessary because of COVID tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, this relief remains valid until October 17, 2022. I recommend that the Board confirm for the relief, that relief remains valid until that date. The applicant also requests an additional extension of October 17, 2023. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that it will be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Madam Chair, I hereby move to confirm that any and all applicable relief is valid through October 17, 2022, including all applicable tolling, and further move to confirm an extension of relief through October 17, 2023, of course, including any and all applicable tolling.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next extension, calling BOA 843-335-42 Chestnut Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name's Ian Urquhart from Martin McLennan &amp; Fish at 155 Seaport Boulevard in Boston, presenting Catherine O'Keefe, the applicant, at 42 Chestnut Street in Beacon Hill.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding 42 Chestnut Street, the Board originally granted relief for this matter on August 7th of 2018. The Board has since granted two extensions of that relief that expire on August 7th of 2022. The first extension, however, was not necessary because of COVID tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, the expiration of the original grant of relief should have been November 12, 2021. However, the Board granted a second extension of relief until August 7, 2022. I recommend that the Board confirm for the record that this extension encompassed all tolling. The applicant now requests additional extension until August 7, 2023. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that this is the applicant's only second necessary extension.
Madam Chair, hereby I move to confirm that all relief is valid through August 7, 2022, including any and all applicable tolling. I further move to confirm an additional extension of relief through August 7, 2023, which of course would include any and all applicable tolling.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in, I too am in support, so the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next extension, calling BOA 938-001-48 Lakeside Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Derek Small, other business adjuster, 51 Dobson Road.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding to 48 Lakeside Avenue, the Board originally granted this relief on August 2nd of 2019, and the Board granted a first extension of that relief until August 2nd of 2022. However, that first extension was not necessary because of COVID tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, this relief remains valid until November 7, 2022. I recommend that the Board confirm for the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant also requests an additional extension until November 7th of 2023. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that this will be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Madam Chair, hereby I move to confirm that relief remains valid through November 7, 2022, including any and all applicable tolling. I further move to confirm an extension through November 7th of 2023 for, for this property, including any and all applicable tolling as relevant.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Regiro? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
I, I said, I, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I too am in support, so motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next extension, calling BOA 826-724, 1199 to 1203 Blue Hill Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, there was a hand raise. Let me just make sure. Mari, are you here for that, for this call, the 1199 Blue Hill Avenue?
Yeah, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm gonna make you a panelist really quickly, just give you one second. You can accept it on your side. Okay. And I may have a muted view, but if you want to just unmute yourself again, then go ahead. Mari, go ahead, um, just, you need to unmute yourself, we can't hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, there you go, go ahead.
Okay, uh, my name is Mari Glazer at Glaycon Contracting, 28 Liberty Pole Road in Hingham. I'm the contractor for the project, for the owner.
Thank you, sir. Regarding 1199, 1203 Blue Hill Avenue, the Board originally granted relief for this matter on August 31, 2018. The Board has since granted two extensions of that relief that expire on August 31, 2022. The first extension, however, was not necessary because of COVID tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, the expiration of the original grant of relief should have been December 6, 2021. However, the Board granted a second extension of relief until August 31, 2022. I recommend that the Board confirm for this for the record that this extension encompassed all tolling. The applicant now requests an additional extension until August 7, 2023. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that this is the only, only second applicant necessary extension.
Chair, hereby I move to confirm that relief remain valid, uh, remains valid, excuse me, until August 31st of 2022, including any and all applicable tolling. I further move to confirm an additional extension through August 7th of 2023, uh, which will include, of course, any and all applicable tolling.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BOA 104-6127, 201 to 241 Stewart Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Attorney Matali Missloss from Goldston &amp; Stores with the business address of 400 Atlantic Avenue in Boston. I'm representing the applicant, 201 Stewart Street Owner LLC.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding 201, 241 Stewart Street, the Board originally granted this relief on August 28, 2018. This means that COVID tolling does not apply because that date is after the beginning of the state of emergency. However, this matter was appealed to Superior Court, the litigation tolling does apply. This relief would normally expire on August 28th of 2022, however, the litigation, with litigation tolling, this relief does not expire until August 8th of 2023. I recommend that the Board confirm, confirm that this relief remains valid until that date.
Madam Chair, hereby I confirm that, actually, excuse me, move to confirm that relief remains valid of August 8th of 2023 pursuant to litigation tolling.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.
You too.
Calling the next case, the Board Final Auditor, calling BOA 118-658-964, Tolman Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Uh, my client is Timothy Longden. Madam Chair, members, this matter, an application for a new nine-unit building at 64 Tolman Street in Dorchester was approved by the Board on June 29th of last year with the proviso of BBDA Design Review. During the design review process, the BBDA required and implemented a three-foot front setback of the building on Tolman Street. This results in two additional spaces in the building's nine-car parking garage shrinking from full-size spaces to compact spaces, uh, with an end result of five compact spaces and four full-size spaces. This hearing is for the Board to review and approve this change in the building's footprint and the change to the parking spaces, and I do point out that this application benefits from an off-street parking variances granted by the Board at the original hearing.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Maranti, it's five compact and how many S-?
And, and, and four full-size, Madam Chair.
And, um, I'm assuming that the front yard was for modal purposes?
Uh, not for modal, it's really, um, it, it was simply the, the fact that the BBDA wished to have a setback. There's a, a sidewalk width on Tolman Street is, is rather narrow. This is a property that's in a, a commercial zone, commercially and residential, that's between Norwood Street and Morrissey Boulevard. Uh, and the BBDA wanted some setback on the, on the Tolman Street side of the building, three feet, um, as a matter of fact, and, and this just resulted in some shrinking of the, the size of the garage.
Uh, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good and, uh, no questions. It, it does reduce two parking spots, but, um, I think it creates a little bit of a better streetscape, so I have no real issue or questions about the.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, uh, Mr. Fortune?
Madam Chair, I think Mr. Hampton had something to say, I think he missed it.
Uh, Mr. Hampton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Uh, just to emphasize, the Board, uh, required extensive design review on this project, and it was even mentioned that even if it meant decreasing the number of units and/or the size of the spaces within this, so I just want to put that on the record that, uh, we were following the directive of the Board.
And asking if we're all design approved?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
But I, I just didn't want the Board to feel like that BBDA went out on its own.
It was random, I know.
We were following directive from the Board on this.
That, that is good to know.
Thank you.
Um, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong? Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
Ms. Dong, looping back to you.
Oh, sorry, I said I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, I too am in support, so motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, the Board Final Auditor, calling BOA 133-6234, 121 D Street. Name and address for the applicant, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Adam Jasper, 53, Thomas Park, South Boston, um, here for, uh, 141 D Street. We filed an amendment, uh, A133-5477 relative to, uh, ERT 11049.
Sorry, just get to the point and tell us what your request, what was approved and what you're requesting.
Uh, so we, we have an approved permit to build a single family, um, which we decided construction on. We filed an amendment to reconfigure the rear decks. Um, basically, we wanted to remove the stairs from the decks. Um, it triggered the rear yard setback, which was already approved for the EIT permit.
So what was the rear, what was the rear yard that was approved, and what's the rear yard, um, uh, under this, under your request?
Um, the rear yard that was approved was eight foot five inches. We're not changing that, we're just removing the stairs.
Okay, and this is a single family?
Correct.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, but let me just, the, the Board final auditor aspect of this is for the addition of the roof deck, isn't that not correct?
Um, no, I think we went through a lot of back and forth, and Mr. Jasper and ISD claim that the roof deck is as of right, so we are not considering that.
Understand.
Because that was the, the, earlier on.
Then the rear, no questions on the rear setback change.
And, and, yes, and thank you for raising that, because I want to make it clear to everybody who's listening today that this approval is solely for those rear decks, so may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a second. Okay, let me go, um, through the roll call. Uh, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong? Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, the G Card, case BOA 132-1654-73 Beacon Street. Name and address for the record, please.
So, good morning, my name is David Freed, and, uh, I'm with Chew and Company Architects in Quincy, Mass. Uh, we're here to, um, get approval from the Board for Article 32 compliance for 73 Beacon Street.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Semenelli?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have those letters as well.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, Legris.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
M- Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Can I call the 930 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals, so 930 cases only, for either deferral or withdrawal, if you give me the address for us, please?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Fortune, Attorney Feaster, uh, 21 Jones Avenue in Dorchester.
For the record, calling BOA 1298-409, 21 Jones Avenue. Good morning, Mr. Feaster. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, uh, it's the Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Joseph Feaster, from the New Law Firm of Dane Torpey, 175 Federal Street, Boston, 02110. Um, I, I guess reluctantly I'm making this request because I know what the Board for deferral, uh, because I know what the Board's schedule is for the cases, but I received a call on Friday informing me that, um, the plans that the architect has stated an address of 19 Jones Avenue instead of 21 Jones Avenue, and that I needed to submit it, submit corrected plans with the address of 21 Jones Avenue so that could be stamped by the, uh, by the plan examiner.
Thank you.
So the only difference is between, uh, the only difference is the change of address between the two sets of plans, but I requested a deferral, would hope that if that's the path I need to go, Madam Chair, uh, rather than something else, then I would hope that I could do it in a.
That makes, that makes sense, because it keeps the record clean. May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I have to retrain myself, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two him in support, so good luck, Mr. Feaster. The date, please?
The date of August 9th at 11:30.
Okay, see you then.
All right, thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 9:30 cases only? Address for us, please. Hearing none, I'll call the first case. Calling DOA 127-9637-185-LONDONSTREET. This is interior framing and MEP work separate in the third and fourth floor to create an owner-occupant ADU on the fourth level. The violation of Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking and loading. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, there is a race hand. Give it one second. Michael, are you, are you going to give testimony? You're the panelist, so you can unmute yourself.
I'm in opposition to the project.
Oh, okay. Is anyone speaking on behalf of this project?
Yes, I'll speak, I'll speak and I'm a neighbor.
No, we need the applicant, please. Who is the applicant on this? Let's move on to the next, let's move on to the next project.
Send my. Hello?
Hi.
This is the applicant. I had some technical difficulties. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
I apologize for that, yes. Destro Lemus and Marcos Lemus, Roberson, where the owner occupants and the developers for the project, the 185 London Street.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed?
What we're proposing is an existing structure, four stories for ZBA hearing that was granted on November 10th. If you could slide now, we'll just get to the ZBA hearing items, all of which were approved except the one we are hearing now, which will go from a density of three to four units with the.
Okay, so, so please, please rewind, please. So you got approval for us to change occupancy to a three-family, is that what you're telling me?
No, ma'am, if you.
So backtrack and just tell us in words what was, what the, what the story is.
The, in words, okay, there was, let me start from the beginning. The project was acquired in March 10th, pre-COVID. We went through COVID. We were granted on November 10th, 2020, a height variance from 30 to 40, floor area ratio from .99 to .192, a size.
Was that for a change of occupancy or was, what is the occupancy on the building?
Current occupancy is three units and at that time it did not include it. I mention these because they were referenced in the rejection letter. And the only material request that we're seeking today is going from a three to a four family on the top floor.
Okay, so this is a request for a, and who owns the property?
We own, we're owner-occupant. Destro Lemus, Marcos Lemus owns the property.
And where, which unit do you guys live in?
Third floor.
You guys live in the third floor, okay? And tell us about the, the dimensions of that fourth unit that you're proposing as an ADU?
Dimensions would be a two-bedroom, consisting approximately 60 feet up to the deck wide, excuse me, long and approximately 24 wide. As per the plans, showed it on the last part of the slide.
And how, what's the size of the unit?
Size, approximately. Total square feet, approximately 800 square feet, I'm, I'm, I was guessing.
And is this for a family member?
Yes.
Okay, and tell us about the lease agreement. Should you sell that unit, your unit? Will that, will that ADU, is there something that states that that ADU will be vacated?
We don't intend to sell. This is a family property.
Yeah, you know, intentions, we, you know, you know, life changes, so we, and, and our approval goes with the property, does not go with the owner. So we need to look at the long term, so you need to tell us how the neighborhood will be protected. So this stays as an ADU and doesn't change into a four-family.
I thought that's what we were requesting today, is to be changed to a four-family.
No, you're requesting for the additional unit to be an ADU. And the requirements for ADU are very specific.
So we would put in the lease agreement, or if we'd be sold, it goes back to a three.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I speak on this?
Yes.
So this project isn't eligible for the ADU program, and if it were, it would not be before the board. So our recommendation on this was a deferral because if they're just extending living space, then it should be that. These plans are mislabeled. They have ADU written all over the place. And my question, as you would see in our recommendation, is if this is indeed being changed from a three-family to a four-family. And if it is, then we'd like it to deferral because I don't think anywhere in the refusal letter does it say that specifically when it's a three-family zoning district, so it's a forbidden use.
I see.
So if they're looking to change from a three to a four, I think you would have to defer this since that's not what, what is being asked.
So let me make it clear from the applicant's perspective. What are, what are you proposing to do?
I'm proposing to do just that, go from a three unit to a four unit as per the recommendation ISD plan reviewer.
May I, may I have a motion for deferral?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
We have it, yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two him in support. Please, Mr., Mr. Fortune, the date?
We're going to give a date of September 13th.
Okay, so make sure to the applicant, you get a new refusal letter that clearly says what your intention is. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day, Bill.
Madam Chair, if I could, could I ask Mr. Hampton a question about why this is not eligible for the ADU program?
Because it's in an LLC. The name's in an LLC.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Also, Madam Chair, on that one, it would have to be read advertised because you're adding an additional violation.
Right, got it.
I know, if you keep it on, Madam Chair, I found this. Senator Edwards was on to give testimony here, so it is deferred until September. Is that correct?
September 13th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Attorney Feaster. I've sent an email chat to you and to Mr. Ehrlich regarding the previous case, 21 Jones Avenue. Can I?
Oh, okay, okay, so let's just, sorry, Mr. Fortune, can you please recall Jones Ave. so we can get it into the record? And let's get a new date from Mr. Feaster. He will be away.
Okay. Calling DOA 1298-409-21JONESAVENUE. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, member of the board, Joseph Feaster, Law Firm of Dane Torpey, 175 Federal Street in Boston.
Okay, the approval was for a deferral. Let's get a new date. Will you be back in September, Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I will be, Madam Chair.
That will be the date of September 13th at 11:30.
Okay, see you then. Enjoy the summer.
Thank you very much.
Okay, calling the next case, calling DOA 132-8555-8C, Allstate Road. This is an interior tenant fit-out, exterior door window modifications, a change from a office max to a total wine liquor store. The violation of Article 65, Section 15, liquor store use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matt Fitzgerald from DLA Piper with a business address of 33 I Street, Boston. On behalf of the proponent, Massachusetts Fine Wine and Spirits LLC. I am joined this morning by Christopher Tracy from O'Neil and Associates and Bob Schaefer from Total Wine &amp; More. Madam Chair, members, today we are seeking a conditional use permit for a change of occupancy from office retail store to liquor store located at 8C Allstate Road in Dorchester, which is located in the South Bay Center in Dorchester, in the former Office Max space. This is in a community commercial sub-district within the Dorchester Neighborhood District that is governed by Article 65.
Mr. Pizzaro, please give us details, hours of operation, square footage, so we can get a sense of what the impact might be.
The square footage, Madam Chair, is 23,000, approximately 23,400 square feet. Hours of operation, I will ask if Bob Schaefer from Total Wine can actually speak to the operations. If, if the board would like to hear it from him now, that's, that's probably as far as the, the hours of operation, security systems.
Yes, I mean, this is because this is a conditional use, so we just figure out what the conditions are, evenly that we should place on this. So, Mr. Schaefer, put your name and address on the record and give us details, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Robert Schaefer. My address is 6600 Rockledge Drive, Bethesda, Maryland 20817. I work for Total Wine &amp; More. Madam Chair, I, the hours of operation are Monday through Saturday. And we, we open at 9:00 AM in the morning and close at 9:00 PM. I think those are the correct hours. I apologize. I'm going to check while we're conducting the hearing, but I think that's the, that's the hours of operation permitted by law.
And what about, what about Saturday, Sunday hours?
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't know the, the Sunday hours. I apologize. I'm going to have to check on that and get back to you, if you don't mind.
Yes, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. It's an abandoned storefront. Looks like they're just on the exterior redefining. I think there's a question, I guess I have a question about the signage package, which is not part of this approval, but should be part of it with the BPDA, so.
Got it.
No questions on the proposed, uh, scope or layout?
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Nguyen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. So despite opposition to any small business agreements, typicals are received, excuse me, unanimous support from the licensing board in January. And based on their promises to provide ample security, lighting, and community benefits, the New Market Business Association and the InterSquare Civic Association have written letters of support. The McCormick Civic Association has voted in opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment.
Mr. Nguyen, what were the hours of operation that were approved by the licensing board? Because we need to make sure that, that they are respected when we look at this proposal. Mr. Nguyen from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services?
Sorry, I don't have those details.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Chris Tracy with the applicant of.
Hold on, just hold on. Let me just go through testimony. Anybody else to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solvitz, Counselor at Large, Michael Flaherty, Counselor to Go, Record and Support.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have some letters of support. I don't see any letters of opposition, and I'm trying to look at the time. They have submitted something here from the licensing board, but I don't see anything where it has time.
Is, is, is anybody here from New Market?
Hi, yes, Ben Murphy here from New Market Business Improvement District. I'm here to speak in support.
Excellent. Ben, do you have an idea of what the proposed hours of operation are?
Unlike everyone else, I'm afraid that I am not aware of those.
We should make sure that's on the record.
Madam Chair, this is Robert Schaefer. I would like to.
No, 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 hold on, hold on. Anybody else to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, sir. You said your name and address.
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Raul Rhodes. The business manager of operators 327 in Boston, and we are in full support of this project.
Thank you. We always heard from Mark, right? Mark, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, Mark Galassio. I have an office over here on Mass Ave, 1252 Mass Ave. I just want to speak in full support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, they're closing hours at 10:00 PM.
And do they have Sunday operation?
I'm looking for it. Very, very drawn off believing when I tell you that.
I bet, I bet. In the meantime, let me go back because I want full acknowledgement from Total Wine, since you are, you are not in the state. Give me the hours of operation for the record, please.
Yes, this is Robert Schaefer for Total Wine. The hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, Saturday, and 10:00 AM through 8:00 PM on Sunday.
Okay. Okay, so we have that on the record. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with two provisos, BPDA design review for signage, which we'll go there anyways, and the proviso for the hours of operation, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two him in support, so motion carries. Good luck with those providers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 128-0651-9BACHELDO STREET. This is an extension of living space into the basement for unit one, renovation of unit two and extension into the attic as unit two. Deck alterations. To violate, new doors, new dormers. The violation of Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Attorney David Click, Neilan Neilan and Click of 85 Main Street, Hawkinson. On behalf of the applicant, Bilal Arié LLC. I'm here, or here with me today is the architect, Louis Colton, as well.
So tell us quickly what's being proposed. Is this occupancy currently a two-family?
It is currently a two-family. It was, it pre-existing a five-bedroom, two-bathroom. It was purchased January 2020. It has lot dimensions of 35 feet, or 37 feet.
So, so let me just ask you, so was this purchased as a two-family? Or are you, or where did you get your occupancy from?
So the appellant at the time, it was purchased as a two-unit. So the renovations were performed on the property. And Madam Chair, this is really where it, this comes into play, as it.
Okay, so, so tell us about the expansion into the basement. What is anticipated in that basement space?
So the, if actually there's a.
Tell us what, tell us what drawing to go to.
If I could actually have command of the screen just to make sure that I have it right.
You know, you, you have not appeared before this board before, so we just tell us which, which drawing.
Madam Ambassador, A2.1.
A2.1, let's go.
Next slide, next one up.
Okay, so tell us about the proposed use in the basement.
So the proposed use in the basement would be for a two-bed, two-bath. And then, so the, there's two units. The first unit is the basement and first floor. Two bedrooms in the basement, two bath, and then a bedroom on the first floor as well as dining and living space with a rear egress off the back edge of the property that you can see clouded here in blue.
Okay, so tell us a couple of things. What's the floor-to-ceiling height in that basement?
The floor-to-ceiling height is, if I could just refer to the architect, I believe it's a little over eight feet. Actually, it may be shown on the last, on the last schematic.
May I recommend that anybody who appears before this board and you know you're anticipated to appear, please watch a previous hearing so you understand our sequence of questioning.
It's dimensioned at eight foot on S2.2 clear in the basement.
And tell us, counselor, we need to hear from you and the arch, your architect. What's the floor-to-ceil height? If you're proposing any window wells? And where do the window wells open into? Because you need to know that clearly this board is not a great fan of bedrooms in the basement. We need to put that out there very clearly to you.
Okay, if.
Okay, so give us the details about the occupancy in the basement.
Okay, there are, as far as from the plan as shown as A2.1, there are two window wells. One in the rear of the, of the building and to the right side. wells, one in the rear of the, of the building and to the right side, along the, I believe it is the, the eastern edge.
Is that a driveway?
Yes, there is actually a 12 and 1/2-foot wide driveway on the right side, running the length of the building down to the end.
Okay, and how is, is this, is there possibility for access? Should it be required from this window well without being hampered by a vehicle?
Uh, Your Honor, sorry, Madam Chair, I would, that's a fair question, I would believe, just given the width of the driveway is 12 and 1/2 feet, that there would be, that you would have the ability to do that, but I would also, if.
Okay, and then final question is, is the utility, utility space accessible from the exterior and not through the unit?
Madam Chair, I might be able to support that question, if I heard. Who?
Who is this, to name and address on the record and answer the question, please?
Uh, Louis Colton, architect for the project, registered architect of the record.
Okay, your address.
My address is 9 Vernon Street, Framingham, Massachusetts, 01701.
Okay, so, let us know, is that utility unit, utility space accessible outside of the, of that, the residential proposed space in the basement?
Uh, yes, it is, and the question with regards to the window well, with any interference of the driveway, there is, the purpose of the driveway is for a single car unit, it does not go all the way back to there, so that it does not in any manner endanger the window well and access to that window well for egress.
And so while we have you on, tell us about the extension, the proposed extension into the attic?
Uh, yes, that's, that's okay with, with everyone. The attic, the attic originally, if you'll look on the drawing, it's, the existing condition, had a two-bedroom and closets originally in the attic. The renovation of the work then made revisions to those bathrooms and, or to those bedrooms, and added a bathroom, and added a utility and laundry room. That was done in a fashion which did not increase the FAR for that area, it was done with, if you'll notice on the, on the cover drawing and on drawing R 1.1, it's what's known as a peekaboo dormer, the dormer did not extend out past the face of the, the line of the roof, it actually goes into the, into the space, so if anything, we actually decreased the FAR for the, for that purpose.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are, are fine, I, I think there, no issue with the attic, I think that's fine. The basement is, I, I, it's not as, there's no, there's not a second bedroom actually shown, the utility is accessed directly through the unit, at least for the plans, that's all I can review, so that is, doesn't seem to be the case. And the, you know, the lower level is below grade, I mean, these are typical window well units that the board is not so excited about, so I think the basement expansion is a problem because of the bedrooms as presented. No other questions?
Okay, um, is anybody here to speak either, oh, sorry, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Um, good morning, Madam, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Keisha Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Some background information on the community process is the butters were all in support, there was no indication of opposition, and at this time, we're deferring to the board. And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
And there's nobody from the city councilor's office?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I mean, I do have, I have a, I have a signature page of 50 signatures in support. That's it.
Okay, um, Mr., um, okay, so I'm looking at the violations, and the violations are the rear yard and the FAR that are the violations, so working on these, and, and given, given Mr., Mr. Robinson's concerns, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for approval with a proviso that there be no bedrooms in the basement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, and here I go, I'm gonna be dreaming your names for the number of times I'm going to be repeating them today, and please, if you could do a spell check on Mr. Fortune's name, so we have it right on the screen, Mr. Fortune?
It's the wrong image, anyway.
Yes.
You don't like my image either?
He's totally incognito here, Mr. Fortune?
Uh, I'm in favor, yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro? Mr. Robinson, thank you, Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two him in support, so the motion carries with that proviso.
Madam Chair, any way we can get some design review on that?
Yes, let's, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that.
Yes, you're right, because let's have amended, amended motion, because we need to ensure that there is no bedroom in that basement.
I'll be happy to accept that as an amendment.
And second?
I'll second that, Eric.
And we've gone through the roll call, so I'm assuming that, and I will just take it on the record, that nobody has any issues with it. Next case?
Calling the next case, calling BOA 132-8912, 951 to 959A, Dorchester Avenue. This is a change of occupancy and use of a commercial space at 951 Dorchester Avenue to include a local retail business, allowed use, and an accessory package store, liquor store is forbidden use, and a bakery use is conditional, no change to the plans. The violation, Article 65, Section 8, bakery use is conditional, and Article 65, Section 8, a liquor store use is forbidden. Name and address for the record.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Suzola, McDermott Quiltian Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802 in Boston. With me today is Peter McGee and Adam Sarbaugh from the Dorchester Market. Madam Chair, this is seeking permission to change occupancy of one of the commercial spaces on the ground floor at this building, it's an in-construction building, it's ongoing construction right now, this was an overall Article 80 Small Project Review project approved by this board back in April of 2018, and what's being proposed is to add a retail package store, a small retail package store liquor store use, and a bakery use to the market, which was in existence at this location before construction of the new building, and that would provide for a limited takeout of beer and wine only, and bakery items to accompany the longstanding market concept at the premises. It's been there for 65-plus years.
Okay, so, Mrs. Suzola, if I'm looking at the drawings correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
The yellow highlighted areas, it's the alcohol, where is the bakery use?
The bakery use, well, so it's, bakery is defined under the code, Madam Chair, is a place where baked goods are made or sold for off-premise consumption, so it's really not a bakery use, you know, in a traditional sense, it's more to cover, you know, production of, you know, small items that would be sold on the premises.
So you could, you could get your, your doughnut with your beer, for take that?
If you are so inclined, Madam Chair.
Okay, got it, got it.
Yeah, so it was more, again, that was more of just looking at the code and understanding that, you know, as an option to be able to make a baked good, and what that actually is defined as, so there's some traditional bakery, and you're right, we tried to be very specific as to where this beer and wine would be located, you can see here on the plan up in front of the board, it's a 10-foot wine rack display and a 6-foot beer rack display, and it's 2600, 2600 market, yep.
All right, and it's an accessory use, um, let's see, what are the hours?
Yes, ma'am, so the, so the typical hours are anticipated as 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the market, we do still need to go to the liquor licensing board for approval of the issuance of the license, so they would also condition the hours, I believe the license would go till 11:00 p.m., but we're not planning to necessarily be open that late.
Okay.
So, we're looking at 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., however, you know, the license would go until 11:00, so.
And so we need to acknowledge that this is an accessory use, it's not a main use, and it's less than 25% of the floor area.
Much less, Madam Chair, yeah, to be clear though, Madam Chair, on the accessory use, we're calling it an accessory use, but the refusal letter just has it as liquor store forbidden.
I, no, I, no, I see that, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we are not approving, so the jacket doesn't look like we are approving a full liquor store, we are proposing, approving just this accessory use. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are very clear and straightforward, no questions from me.
Any questions from the board?
Will there be a change to the exterior signage?
Uh, Mr. Ehrlich, there will be additional signage, we did, we did go to design review for the overall project back in 2018, however, to be 100% candid, that, that is a, that image of the signage will change, so there would need to be design review for signage, but that's your question?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, George Nguyen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a butters meeting for the proposal on May 17th, and while a few neighbors spoke in opposition, believing that we hurt business at adjacent liquor stores, a majority of folks on the call voiced their support, and over a hundred of butters have written letters of support for the return of Dorchester Market and owner Peter, who has over 50 years of experience operating here.
Yes, we remember, thank you. Um, anybody else to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGappron, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solvitz, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Councilor, Record and Support.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have those letters of support and opposition that the Mayor's Office voted.
Okay, Ms. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, um, may I have a, a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review for exterior signage.
Second.
And, and to acknowledge that this is an accessory use.
Aye.
Um, uh.
Aye.
Mr. Fortune? Thank you for jumping the gun, Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong? Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two him in support, so motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 10:33, I'm gonna call the 10:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals, this is 10:30 only, you can give me the address first, please.
Good morning, this is Kevin Joyce, Guardi Law Office, 50 Franklin Street.
The address, please?
291 Beacon Street.
Okay, for the record, calling BOA 133-6832, 291 Beacon Street, name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Joyce, Guardi Law Office, 50 Franklin Street, my appearance is limited to the Board of Appeal here. Representing petitioner, respectfully request to deferral for brief, uh, brief time, so that we conclude, can we conclude negotiations in the community? I believe.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to defer, Eric.
Second.
Second, Ligris.
Mr. Fortune?
Mr. Joyce, would you be the 23rd, I'm in favor of the deferral?
Uh, Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two him in support of the deferral. Motion carries, may I have a date, please?
Uh, Mr. Joyce, when is, when is the meeting, 'cause they could set a date for August 23rd or September 13th?
I think August 23rd would be fine.
Uh, we'll do August 23rd at 11:30.
Thank you, sir.
Well, is there any other deferrals to 10:30? Or withdrawals to 10:30? Hearing none, we'll go back to the 9:30s. Calling the next case, calling BOA 128-0472, 18 Henry Street. This is parking for two spaces next to their home, the violation, Article 65, Section 9, side yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Henry, screen on.
Hi, on the Henry, can you raise your hand? Okay, I do have a hand raised, Emily, is this your, are you here to?
Sorry, no, I'm from Councilor Box Office, I just was taking a call, did 291 just get deferred? I just want to be sure, 291 Beacon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, let's, let's just move on, is anybody here for Henry, is Mr. Whitaker here? Okay, if not, let's go on to the next case.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 128-3621, 118 Holmes Avenue. This erect a new three-family residential dwelling with roof deck and existing rare vacant lot of 4,491 square feet, and propose six tandem R Street parking. The violation, Article 65, Section 65-41.4, parking in the front yard. Article 65, Section 65-41.5, parking size maneuverability. Article 65, Section 8, 3F and a 2F is forbidden. Article 65, Section 42.13, two more dwellings on the same lot. Article 65, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building has excess in storage. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Anthony Monahan, I am the owner of the lot, I am out of 18 Rock Island Road in Quincy, Mass.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
So we own a lot that's been deeded, I wanna make this clear, we're not subdividing this lot, it's been deeded as a separate lot since the 50s. Currently, we are proposing a three-family dwelling, residential dwelling on this lot, there is a, there's an easement, driveway easement, that's shared with the building in front of it, that has, again, been in place since the 50s, we are just looking to build something on this lot, it's 4,491 square feet, and we'd like to, we'd like to build something here.
So this is a 4,491 square feet, what's the zoning in this district?
It is a 2F 5,000.
And you're already below the, the basic requirement of a 5,000-square-foot lot to build a one-family or a two-family, and you're requesting a three-family?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay, um, so tell us you have a number of violations here, tell us about how you're gonna propose parking and how it's proposed to work.
Sure, thank you. So in the, in the, as you see the image up here, there's a driveway, shared driveway with the front, then there is a, there's three existing parking spaces for the building in the front that are already existing. On the lot line there is currently a fence that separates the two lots, and then you'll see, we originally proposed three parking spaces, after meeting with the neighborhood extensively, they were, they asked for some more parking, so we turned the three parking spaces into tandem spaces, creating six parking spaces for the three-family.
Okay, and what are the proposed sizes of the units and the bedroom count?
So there's three units, we had originally all two-bedroom, two-bath, after meeting with the neighborhood, they wanted us to change one of them to a three-bedroom, to invite more of a family atmosphere, so they're all roughly 900 to 1,000 square feet, the first two floors are two-bed, two-bath, the top floor is a three-bed, two-bath.
And one, one three-bed, okay? Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine, excuse me, in terms of the proposal, can I just ask the proponent one question, it looks like there is. Uh, it looks like there is a couple of other rear buildings on the street, 104R, 122R. Can you just, just tell me what those, what's this, the, um, are those one-family, two-family, what are those?
Those are, I know there's multiple one-families. I believe one of them is a two-family, I'm not exactly sure, but yes, there are other. These, this whole street has rear lots set behind all the, or many of the buildings for some reason. Um, and they, they were there 70-plus years ago, and many of the neighbors have built structures in the rear. There are singles and doubles, though, I don't think there are any three-families coming.
Okay, um, any questions? Um, uh, Mr. D'Amico, can you put your, your concerns on the record?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Um, I would like to request any, uh, front yard parking to be removed. And secondly, I'd like to see spaces one and three be removed, uh, for safe and adequate maneuverability.
So you remove space one and three plus front yard parking?
Correct.
What, so what does that, what, what, what would that in essence leave the proposal with? How many spaces?
Um, let's see.
Got two spaces on the side, parking number five and six?
Seven, eight, I think it's, uh, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, it would leave with eight spaces.
Okay, okay. Uh, any other questions from the board? Can everybody please mute themselves? Um, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just, um, put a three-family on a, on an under 5,000-square-foot lot in the rear of an existing lot seems, uh, excessive. So it's not so much a question as a comment.
Yes, thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? And please, after you've put your comments in, lower your hand.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise De Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant did meet with the Butters back in 2021, as well as the Greater Bolt in Geneva Association a few different times back in 2021 as well. Direct the Butters did have concerns around privacy with the three-decker coming up next to them, overcrowding as, and as well as density. As the applicant stated, Greater Bolt in Geneva did want to see more parking spaces, and the applicant did, you know, show them that, present them that, and they did want to see a, a three-bedroom unit. There was no negative pushback outside of density and just privacy, um, concerns and affordability. At this time, our office would like.
That sounds like a lot of concerns, though, density, privacy, um, parking and affordability. Okay, thank you. Any, anybody else to speak on the record?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Lester and Susan McKenzie. We're from 112 Holmes Avenue, we're Butters to that 118 rear. This property, we've been on, in this property for over 40 years. There's never been anything bigger than a one-family. It was zoned for either a garage or a one-family home. For them to, um, want to allow a three-family, there's not enough space, there's not enough room, and I had, didn't hear anyone, I was at all of the meetings, they, no one asked about their family. We really didn't want a two-family. But we know that they're determined to put something much bigger than will be appropriate in this lot and in this area.
Okay, thank you.
I also agree with my wife, Lester.
You better agree with your wife.
Yeah, we've told this gentleman many times, and there was no request. There were no requests, um, for a three or a three-bedroom on top of the two. Also, we've been here for a long time, and there's only one house on the back of a lot here on Holmes Ave, going down to, to Topland. There's just one house that have a building behind it. And we explained it and talked about that, and all these objections here, why that building should not be put there.
Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, we, we have a very long agenda, so thank you and your wife for, for logging in. Anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, one letter of opposition against the three-family.
Uh, Mr. Hampton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend it denied without prejudice. We feel that the proposal's, uh, excessive. If they wanna come back with a lower, um, unit count where it's more appropriate for the zoning district, we may entertain that, but we're opposed to this project.
Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please? May I have a motion?
Motion is denied without prejudice.
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, uh, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Arlick?
Aye.
Ms, Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris? Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
Aye to him in support of the motion, so it's been denied without prejudice, thank you.
Thank you.
Going to the next case, calling BOA 1315141, 16 Church Street. This erected three-family residential dwelling. The violation, Article 55, Section 65 dash 41, off-street parking insufficient. Article 65, Section 2, conforming with existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 65 dash 14.3, traffic visibility across the corner. Article 65, Section 32, this is in the Neighborhood Design Overlay District. Article 65, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building has excessive in story. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Emstitz with Adams &amp; Maranti with the business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Uh, with me today are the owners Sean George and Scott Kirkwood. This is a proposal to erect a traditional-style three-family dwelling with two off-street parking spaces on a, approximately a 2,658-square-foot vacant corner lot, uh, which was previously an, an existing three-family back in the early 1970s. Uh, this proposal is located within a 3F 5,000 sub-district. The three units will be approximately 1,079 square foot each, with the total living area accumulating to 3,257 square feet. Unit 1, Unit 2, and Unit 3 will all marry each other with a layout consisting of a three-bedroom on each floor, such a living area, two-bath as well. Uh, the proposed FAR is a 1.22, and a 0.5 is what is allowed by the code here. Uh, building height, in, in height, is actually compliant at 34 feet, uh, but it's excessive with the stories we're proposing, uh, three stories and compliance is a 2.5. Uh, as you can see here, we've been cited, uh, for conformity of the existing building alignment, uh, as well as the lot area width, frontage. Uh, but as, as seen, consistent with the neighborhood in the other lots, in align with the existing other families in this neighborhood is, is intact.
Okay, let's ask you, let's ask you a couple of questions. Is there any occupancy in the basement?
Uh, no, it's going to be just storage in the basement.
Okay, so tell us about the parking, the driveway width, and the number of spaces?
So there's gonna be two parking spaces, they're gonna be accessed on Niffield Street. Uh, the parking spaces are gonna be 8.5 by 20 feet, and then the second parking space will be 8 feet by 20 feet. The curb cut that's being proposed is an 18-foot, uh, curb cut, again, on Niffield Street. Um, also, something else that I think is worth pointing out is that we were cited for the traffic visibility, uh, on Niffield Street. As you can see, is, is on, on Church Street, no matter which direction you head, and that Niffield Street is a one-way street, so I think it was important to, uh, highlight that as well.
Okay, and is there a roof deck proposed?
No, there is not, Madam Chair.
Okay, how, how are, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, I think, um, in, in general, the, the size and scale is, is fairly consistent with the street. Obviously, it's a little bit of a smaller lot. Um, yeah, I do have, and I'm sure Mr. D'Amico will, will have a question about the parking, because there's this, uh, extra-large 18-foot curb cut on the back to achieve the two spots. Um, but other than that, there is no occupancy in the basement, so no other questions for me on the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise De Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant did meet with Direct the Butters back in May, as well as the Meeting Hill House Neighborhood Association. Uh, Butters would like to see a fence alongside the property as well as lighting. At this time, our office would like to defer any judgment to the board, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGaughan, City Council, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Lars Michael Flaherty, Councilor, record in support.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I do have a few letters of support.
Hi, Bob, do you have a question, um, do you wanna give testimony here?
Yes, I would, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. And I was just wondering, is there any parking, uh, where the curb cut is going to go?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, if that, if there, is there any on-street parking, uh, is that your question, um?
Yes.
Rico, okay.
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, Kirkwood here, there is not, uh, no parking on that side.
Okay, then that's fine.
Okay.
Jeff Hampton, you looking to give testimony here, see any of his face?
Oh, congratulations. Sorry, forgot to put it down. But we, uh, well, since I'm on, uh, we're on the record for approval with design review, please.
Thanks. Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPA design review, as well as looking to see if they can reduce the curb cut at all, um, to be a little bit more pedestrian-friendly from 18 feet.
Okay, um, there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Ms. Arlick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong? Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
I'm sorry, I said aye.
I'm sorry, I'm just having our time here today, and I to him in support, so motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1334896, 240 Norwell Street. This erected two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. The violation, Article 65, Section 2, conforming with existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking. Article 65, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, the business, 51, business address of 1 Thompson Road. Um, Madam Chair, we're here today seeking to erect a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Zoning sub-district here is a 3F 6,000. Our lot size is, uh, 2,200 square feet. The violations are as follows. Um, lot area insufficient, again, uh, we have 2,200 square feet. Lot width, lot frontage, the requirement is 50 feet, we have 33 feet. FAR requirement is 0.4, we are proposing 0.59. Side yard relief, the requirement is 10 feet, we are proposing 5. And with regard to off-street parking, Madam Chair, we are proposing two compact spaces in the rear of the property. The, uh, units, uh, one-bedroom, one-bath. Unit 1 is approximately 6,000 square feet, and Unit 2 is approximately 630 square.
And I'm sorry, they are both one-bedrooms?
That is correct, one bed, one bath.
Okay, how, uh, are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are pretty straightforward, um. The parking spot, I mean, the, the setback i- is on the right-hand side, which is tighter. There is a driveway on the left-hand side. Just not exactly sure how to get into the parking spots, but they don't seem pushed back behind the building far enough in the site plan. But, um, no other questions for me in terms of the size and scale. It's pretty consistent, it's a smaller lot for certain, so.
Yes, it's, um, quite undersized, 2,200.
Quite undersized, yeah, yep.
Um, let's see, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise De Santos here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant did meet with the Direct the Butters back in March of 2022, as well as Wild Coalition a few different times around this. Um, folks were more concerned around the neighborhood development projects being proposed on Norwell Street, and they would like to see this, um, sold as affordable units. At this time, we would like to defer all judgment to the board, thank you.
So, Mr. Santos, um, there are a number of DND projects that will be affordable. Uh, how many, do you have a sense on that street?
I know there's one DND project near this one, this specific location that they're proposing at the moment. Derek can attest to that.
Okay, anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
For the record, Madam Chair, we do have, uh, a letter of support from the Wild, from the Neighborhood Group, Wild Coalition.
Yes, sweet. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have that, love.
Okay, um. So, Mr., Mr. Small, have you seen the BPA's recommendation?
I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, and, and it's doable?
Yes.
Okay, uh, given all this information, may I have a motion?
Which part, which part of the year and emissions, I looked at it.
The BPA is proposing, um, recommending approval with proviso for design review with an effort that the existing trees be protected.
That, that's fine.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, with BPA design review for site plans, specifically existing trees, uh, to be retained.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Arlick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
Aye to him in support of the motion, so the motion for approval with design review carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much, I'll be back.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1322121, 128, 74R, Fox Street. They're looking to erect a 16-foot by 25-foot-long, 13-foot-high, 400-square-foot prefabricated metal garage installed in the backyard of their property. The property has an existing driveway reading to the ramp. The violation is Article 60, Section 9, side yards insufficient, and Article 60, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, and member of the board. My name's Carlos Valentin, and my fiance Joanna Acevedo. Uh, we are here for 74 Favor Street in Matapan, and we're looking to erect, uh, a, a metal garage, metal shed, however you wanna look at it, um, in the back of the, uh, yard.
Okay, so I see the plans. Uh, okay, yes, please, so let's just see where it's proposed to go?
Yes, i- if you look at the, uh, top right, which is proposed concrete area, that's where the concrete slab will be poured. It's five feet away from, uh, the back, uh, fence and the side fence as well.
And this is a garage for a car or for storage?
Both, one-car garage in a winter, and, you know, snow blower, lawnmower, that type of thing.
Okay, okay, have you checked out any other options?
No.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are pretty straightforward, um, I mean, one question for the proponent. So does the driveway currently go that far back into the site? It's a little hard to tell from.
No, so the driveway goes up to, you see where, uh, right behind the, uh, where the stairs are in the back.
Where the fence is?
It's right, it, it, it ends there, so I would have to pour asphalt to connect the garage to the, uh, to the, to where the asphalt line is right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, no further questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi. Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant for 74 Favor Street had the Butters meeting on May 18, 2022. Um, they also attempted to meet with the Colorado Streets Citizens Group twice, but canceled due to, it was canceled due to technical difficulties. Uh, they also agreed not to visually disturb the community and have provided list of homes in close vicinity to the proposal with attached garages. Um, at this time, the GMNC has decided not to support. Um, we, at this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judge of the board on this. to the Justice of the Board on this matter, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have the low-brace hands.
Mr. Fortune, anything on the record?
No, Madam Chair, we have nothing.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'm going to go against Mr. Hampton's recommendation. I think there should be design review for this, just to make sure that it's adequately screened and buffered on the backyard, and the connection of the additional driveway is done properly.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
On the next case, calling DOA 13155815, Bell Avenue. This is an addition of a second story over the original, original house on the first, existing first floor. The violation is Article 56, Section 8, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 56, Section 8, open spaces insufficient. Article 56, Section 8, the rear yard insufficient, and Article 56, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project, and I have a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. And with me are the owners of the house, who will be living in the house, Kayla and Eric Hanson.
So, Mr. Burke, tell us what's being proposed?
It's an existing one-story house. As you can see, the lot is kind of narrow, but the owners are looking to grow their family here. They would like to add on a second floor. We would be adding on 942 square feet to provide three bedrooms and two bathrooms on the second level, and to improve the first-floor living spaces thereby. We're also moving the front door to face the street, which currently it faces the side yard.
Okay, and so it's a three-bedroom? Any, so basement, just has laundry, bathroom? What is that space that the rear proposed in the basement?
That is an ADU that the owner has had approved, yes.
And how large is that ADU?
I want to remember, it's around 700 square feet.
And that's for a family member?
I believe, I'm not sure who, I don't think it's a family member in there, but I don't know for sure, I can ask them about that, yeah.
Okay, so is this a one-family or a two-family then?
It's a one-family with an ADU, yes.
And please, if this gets approved, I would like that put into the minutes, which gets registered at the Registry of Deeds, so we know that it's not a two-family dwelling, okay?
Madam Chair, this is Tom. I think when the certificate of occupancy is used from ISD, it will list it as a one-family with a...
Yes, but I still want whatever goes to the Registry of Deeds to be very clear that this is an ADU and not a two-family, okay? Thank you. And any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a community meeting on April 20, 2022. An additional abutters meeting was held with West Rock Street Neighborhood Council on May 24, 2022, where the zoning committee voted 7-0 in support of the project. We have received no letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Ms. Lacy, do you know if the community was aware of that ADU in the basement?
Yeah, definitely, it was addressed at both meetings. I would say for the Office of Neighborhood Services meeting, there was only the direct abutter who attended. And it was definitely addressed, and there were, oh, there was no opposition toward that ADU.
Yeah, got it. Is, any, Ms. Ambassador, anybody, any more raised hands?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at large. Due to the lack of opposition, the council took a record and support.
And I do have a raised hand, Eric Hanson and Kayla?
Sorry, we're going to...
You're the owners, let's just hear from your architect. We hope you're in support of this. Anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Burke, a couple of questions on the ADU. What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
It's seven and a half feet, yes.
Okay, and it has full access to the backyard and the rear?
Yes, it does, through a very nice doorway and stairway, yes.
Okay, excellent. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the design review, BPD design review, and confirmation that this is approval of a single family with an ADU unit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, goodness. Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Dong?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support of this proposal, so motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go back to a case I called earlier on Hendry Street. You know, Madam Ambassador, Hendry Street came on.
Can you raise your hand if you're on for this, for Hendry? The ONSD know who the petitioner is here?
I tried to reach out to them, just, they haven't responded back to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to call it into the record, calling DOA 1280472, 18 Hendry Street. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second, that, Legris.
Okay. Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris? I too am in support, just for the record, we know that it's 11:05, and the applicant has not showed, so motion carries.
I'm going to call the 10:30, just in case somebody wasn't on when I did the deferrals and withdrawals, but I'm going to do the 10:30 cases for deferrals and withdrawals. If you have a case, give me the address, please. Hearing that, I'll go to the first case. Calling DOA 1321013, 41 Mount Vernon Street. This is renovate the existing three-family dwelling, extend living space into the basement, new second-floor bay window, construct a rear addition, and deck at the third level, and erect a roof deck. The violation is Article 62, Section 25, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with business address 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Matt Wood, the owner of the property. This is an appeal for a conditional use permit for a roof deck, which is part of an application to renovate the existing three-family dwelling at 41 Mount Vernon Street in Charlestown. Extend living space into the basement, approximately 280 square feet. Install a new bay window on the second floor, construct a rear addition at the third floor level, and add a rear deck and roof deck. The roof deck requires a conditional use permit. All other work is zoning compliant. I mentioned by way of background that this board approved a nearly identical, but slightly larger application, a version of this application in December of 2020. That approval was appealed by an abutter whose primary concern was the size of the proposed rear addition. Litigation was settled, and my client agreed to reduce the size and height of the zoning-compliant addition and resubmit his permit application, which is why this has returned to the board. Unit 1 here would be a 1,364-square-foot two-bedroom unit, which would include approximately 280 square feet in the basement, consisting of a bathroom, a laundry closet, and a very small office or a very large walk-in closet, depending upon how one wanted to use it. The ceiling height in the basement is eight feet. Unit 2 would be a 1,215-square-foot two-bedroom unit, and Unit 3 would benefit from the rear addition and grow from its current approximately 480 square feet to 930 square feet, also with two bedrooms. Unit 3 would have a zoning-compliant walkout rear deck on the third floor level, roughly 12 by 13 feet, and a similar-sized roof deck accessed by hatch. The roof deck is the sole matter before the board today, as it requires a conditional use permit for altering the building's roof line. As such, I would posit that this is an appropriate location for a roof deck, as there are many other similar examples in the neighborhood that adequate and appropriate facilities are provided, and the roof deck would constitute neither a hazard nor a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Mr. Maranti, so this is a second-floor, a second-floor roof deck?
The roof deck is a walkout on the third floor level from, I'm sorry, there's a rear deck on the third floor, which is a walkout, and then there is a roof deck above Unit 3, accessed by a hatch. And it is the roof deck that requires the conditional use permit, again, not for reasons of access, but because it alters the building's roof profile.
And what's the dimension of that deck?
It's not equal dimensions, but it's roughly 13 by 14, or 12 by 14. There is a, if we go down to...
No, that's sufficient, thank you.
Sheet A2, yes, Sheet A2. It's about 12 feet, but then it goes out to about 14 feet, and it's about 14 feet in width.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. You know, it is pulled back from the edge, and it is accessed by a hatch. So, no questions from me on the proposal.
Is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Caitlin Stapleton with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on April 12 for this proposal. The applicant addressed all questions and her concerns from the neighbors. Most concerns were related to some may quality of air and noise during the construction period along with the other projects happening in the area. The applicant has tried working with the neighbors since the meeting. I received five letters of opposition and the letters of support, but at this time, would like to defer it to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, I actually, I did have a question, I was on mute. The extension of living space in the basement, the floor plan's pretty quick. What is the use in the basement?
The basement use is a bathroom, a small laundry room. Actually, if, whoever's controlling the plans...
Hold on, let me just, before we go there, just let's see if there's anybody else to speak. Ms. Ambassador, have you cleared the deck?
Yes, I have no...
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have those letters the Mayor's Office gave us.
Okay, okay, please go ahead then. Mr. Ehrlich? Mr. Maranti?
Sheet A1 in the lower right-hand corner depicts the space in the basement, which again, as I mentioned, was previously approved. It is a bathroom, a utility closet with a washer dryer, and then what is depicted as an office or a den, which, as I say, looking at it, is perhaps more suitable as a walk-in closet. It's about six and a half feet deep, and maybe, maybe 10 feet in width.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have, we have enough information, we have testimony. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Hampton, you're providing, proposing BPDA, propose approval with proviso with design review?
It was for the roof deck for screening and the location, but if Mr. Robinson is fine with the location and the setback, then we don't need to see it.
Okay, so give me a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I too am in support, so it's been approved with a design review. I mean, it's been approved, straight, straight approval.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck.
On the next case, calling DOA 1288669, 97 to 101 Newbury Street. This combined 97 to 99101, Newbury, to be known as 97101 Newbury Street. Violation is Article 8, Section 7, use is conditional. Cafe condition, cafe is a conditional use in the P365 sub-district. Article 15, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 20, Section 1, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 32, Section 32-4, this is G-Cod overlay district. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, maybe Ryan Woods, one second. Ryan, are you here for this proposal?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let me just make you a panelist really quick. It may unmute you, but just unmute yourself again when you switch over to panelists. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, and I believe our attorney, Lou Miller, is here as well.
You said Miller?
Yes, Louis Miller.
Louis Miller, okay, yep, he was, he's second as well. Louis, I just made you a panelist as well. If you can accept that designation and unmute yourself, you go ahead and start.
Once you put your name and address to the record, please go immediately to what your request is and the violations.
No, I got you, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. My name is Louis Miller, I'm with the law from the Belvedere, Dana, 1 Federal Street in Boston.
Haven't seen you in a while, Mr. Miller.
Excuse me?
Haven't seen you in a while, Mr. Miller.
It's nice to see you again, Madam Chairman, nice to be, appreciate it. We're looking to do renovation improvements to our existing building and to the adjacent building of 97101 Newbury Street, near the corner of Newbury and Clarence Street, here with Brian Woods, who's Executive Vice President of the applicant, and I hope with John Tropicki, who's with Royal Silver, our architect. We've been through a lengthy public process with this project. We'd like to thank the Mayor's Office, Representative Livingston, Council of Arc, numerous back-bay neighborhood associates.
So, you know, we'd like to go directly...
Go as quickly as you like.
Yes.
Well, as quickly as you like.
So, tell us about this cafe, and tell us what's increasing your FAR. But before we do that, is Mr. Seminelli on?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Good morning, Members of the Board, Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have those letters as well, Secretary.
Thank you, so let's go directly to the use and the reason why the violation for FAR excessive and rear yard insufficient is triggered.
Sure, the use is a grab-and-go cafe. There's no cooking, there's no, we're just going to serve, grab-and-go, things, people will come in, and for that, we need a conditional use. It's not a restaurant of any kind or anything like that. As far as the violations go, the FAR is basically because we're bootstrapped from being a pre-existing non-conforming building. Because of the amount of money we're putting into the renovation, we're now bootstrapped into complying with existing code. Existing code calls for 3FAR, I think with our renovations will be something in order of 5.1FAR. In fact, we are, in terms of what we're adding to the existing building, I think it's less than, and the architect, I mean, I believe it's less than about 2,000 square feet.
So, tell us exactly what it is you are adding, so we can understand what the request is.
Sure, is John, is the architect there? John, do you want to go through that?
Yes, can you help, can you all hear me?
We can, please just go ahead, name and address, and tell us what's the proposal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Yes, the FAR, the existing non-conforming building is a FAR 5.7. By connecting 97 to that building, we're actually reducing the FAR to 5.1. The 97 lot building alone, the FAR, what we're proposing is 3.3, if you look at just the 97 lot, about 647 feet over the zoned FAR.
So, can you please tell us which drawing we should look at to see where the addition is?
Yes, what we're proposing is to reconstruct the 97 building. So, if you scroll back up, I'm sorry, we scroll back up to the plan right there. Within the red box of that plan is the 97 lot. We are connecting it to the lower plan, which is the 99101 existing New England Historic Genealogical Building. So, what we're proposing is to reconstruct the existing, to reconstruct the 97 building. At that location, extend the lower levels back to the alley to meet the facades of the existing buildings on either side. So, the 99 on both the east and the west side, the existing buildings extend back to the alley side and are significantly taller than what we have proposed. the existing buildings extend back to the alley side and are significantly taller than what we have proposed.
Okay, okay, got it. Um, and the cafe use is for general, the, the general public or just for the, um, for, for users, people who use the, the society space?
Well, it will be open to the public, but it will be only people in the building. It's not going to be a rest, it's not, it's not at all intended to be a bad destination.
So, it's, it's, so it's a, it's a, it's essentially going to be a cafe with takeout, is that? Or are you anticipating it being a sit-down cafe?
Uh, a sit-down cafe.
Okay, good, that was the right answer. The answer was... Okay, okay, uh, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, uh, it's, no, no real questions on the proposal. It's, it's very handsome in terms of the addition, and it is extending back to the alleyway, uh, on the lower floors, but I think it's consistent with anything, uh, else on the alleyway. So, really no questions on the proposal, uh, it looks quite nice.
And Mr. Robinson, does it look like it's handicapped accessible?
Yes.
It is, okay. Um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Lots of background information on the community process. Um, as you heard from the applicant, our office held in a Butters meeting. Uh, there was just one Butter who had some concerns regarding the use of the back alley. Uh, we encouraged the applicant, we continued communication with that Butter, uh, throughout this process and approved, continue to work with them. Uh, the applicant also met with, uh, NAV, uh, the Neighborhood Association for Back Bay, and I believe they were not opposed. Uh, with that, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have those letters that the mayor's office just spoke of.
Madam Chair, if you have two raised hands, I'll start with Conrad. Can you state your full name and address for the record, please?
Hi, this is Conrad Armstrong from four thirty-nine Marlboro Street. I'm representing the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. Uh, the applicant met with us many times. Um, normally NAV would oppose, uh, relief from rear yard setback, but we do feel this is a very unusual situation. All the other buildings next to it are already built out all the way to the, um, the alley, uh, the curve of the alley. Uh, similarly, we normally would oppose increase in FAR, but as was mentioned, the, the new combined buildings, uh, ninety-seven 101 actually lowers the FAR. And so, we do not oppose that. And lastly, we do not oppose the addition of a simple little, uh, cafe inside their space. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Mark, I see your hand is raised. Are you looking to give testimony here?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Osso, I'm a business rep for companies local three twenty-seven in Boston, and, uh, we're in full support of this project. Thank you.
Sorry, uh, Mayor, are you looking to give testimony as well, or are you all set?
I'm also my colleague, thank you.
Uh, thank you, okay, no additional raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris? I two in, I two in support, so it's been, uh, approved, good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Calling your next, calling your next case, calling DOA one-three-three-two-three-six-six fifty-three Rampian Way. This is to convert the existing attic into living space with two bedrooms and a bathroom, construct two dormers. Violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building has excessive in feet. Name and address for the record.
I'm Mark McNichol, eighty-two Spring Street.
And Derek Rubenoff, eighty-two, uh, Spring Street. And I are the architects for the project.
So, tell us, um, tell us about the proposal.
Sure, this is, um, we're adding two dormers in the attic level. This is a two-family, remain two-family, and we're adding additional square foot for the second floor unit.
And tell us what the total, um, proposed square footage or proposed addition is?
Okay, so the attic space will become about, um, uh, eighty, eight fifty, eight hundred and fifty square foot?
Eight hundred and fifty additional square feet, and that's just for the second unit. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, very familiar with this location, no questions on the proposal.
Any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in, um, support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At the Butters meeting in May, we heard no concerns. We received four letters of support from Director Butters and a letter of support from the Columbia Seven Hills Civic Association. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, relating to going record and support.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Um, did I just see something in past thing that there's a cupboard porch or is that, um, part of the existing building?
Fifty.
Okay, got it. Um, given that information, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, um, to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I two in support, so motion for approval, uh, is carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling DOA one-three-one-one-zero-four-three fifteen Fowler Street. This is erected new construction, three-family dwelling. The violation is Article sixty, section nine, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty, section nine, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, usable open spaces insufficient. Article sixty, section forty-one point one, conforming with existing building alignment. Article sixty, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. And Article sixty, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse, sorry, Counselor, one second. Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself, Mr. Matt.
Okay, um, okay, so, um, I have to tell the applicant that we are a six-member board, and for approval, you need, um, all five, all, you need five members in support. So, you are, you can go ahead or you can request the date. All seven members will, will be able to sit.
We would like to proceed, Madam Chair.
Okay, so please put your name and address on the record and tell us what you're, what's being proposed.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz from Adams and Moranci with the business address of one sixty-eight H Street, first floor, South Boston. Uh, with me today is the owner Neil Gulden and the architect Matt Bonacci from Casa Design. This proposal is to erect a traditional three-family dwelling on a forty-two-hundred-square-foot vacant lot. The proposal is located within a three-F five-thousand sub-district. The three units will range from approximately fourteen seventy-three square feet to twenty-six twenty-three square feet, with a total living area of approximately five thousand five hundred and seventy square feet. Uh, unit one will consist of a three-bedroom, a first floor, along with livable space in the basement. Basement height is eight feet. There will be no bedrooms in the basement. There will be two window wells on the rear of the property, one at the size of three by six feet and the other one three by three feet and four inches, uh, for access, egress means. Um, there are also, in the basement, you will notice that there will be a build-out of, of a wheelchair accessibility, uh, in order for that to be built out at some future date. Until then, it will be used as storage. Uh, the basement total square foot...
So, I just want to be clear, is this anticipated to have any unit in the basement at some point, then?
No, no, that's just...
Because this is, this is new construction and already everything looks pretty dense, so I just need clarity.
Correct, yes, no, there won't be any intentions of having a basement unit in this property. Uh, this is going to be an accessible unit, so the, the shaft is actually just going to be built out to be compliant with the code, just in case if there is a compliancy, um, you know, a tenant that comes in, in a wheelchair, accessible shaft needs to be built and it will have the accessibility for it to be done so. Um, so the basement, total square footage of the basement unit will be eleven forty-eight square feet, uh, and the first floor unit will be fourteen seventy-five square feet. Unit two will consist of a three-bedroom, along with the kitchen, dining room, living, and office slash den space, with a total square footage of approximately fourteen hundred seventy-four square feet. Uh, unit three will also consist of, of another three-bedroom, along with an office and a den, kitchen, dining, living, approximately fourteen seventy-three square feet. The proposed FAR is a one-point-three-two, and a point-eight is what is allowed by code. Uh, the side yard with, the right side is compliant at ten feet, uh, but the left side needs release as proposed at five feet. Twelve hundred feet of open space...
So, uh, let me, let me just ask you about the side yard on the left side.
Okay.
Uh, how close is the, uh, body building, um, to their property line? So, what's the distance in essence from the existing building to your proposed building?
I'm going to defer, so Matt Bonacci, the architect's here, I'm going to defer to him, um, on the exact, um, dimensions from the existing property from eleven, I believe you referred to eleven through thirteen Fowler Street, if I'm correct. Matt, are you with us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Matt Bonacci from Casa Design, seventeen Avolo Street, Summerfield, Mass. Um, are you, you referring to the left side of the property?
Yes, you have, you have a left side side yard of five feet, required is ten. What's the distance between the wall of the building next door to the proposed wall here?
There is, there is currently a vacant lot on the left side of, um, fifteen Fowler Street.
Okay.
On the left-hand side.
And then is, let me just see, front yard, um, tell us about the rear yard. Rear yard, you meet building code requirement?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay, um, let's see, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, no questions. I think it's fairly consistent with the street. Um, I think the only thing is the, the parking is right up against the rear property line, so maybe we can, uh, have BPDA look at that for site plan and screening and buffering, but no other questions on the proposed, uh, building.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with Director Butters in May and as well as the Aryan Island Town Neighborhood Association. Director Butters would like to see, like, families, um, in these units, and at this time, our office would like to defer any judgment to the board. Thank you.
And then, so we have two, two minutes here. Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, one support letter.
Uh, BJ is from, um, Councilor of the World Office. Go ahead, BJ, can you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, thank you, uh, BJ Oswego, uh, District Public Councilor, Brian Wall's office. Uh, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. BJ, at some point, can you ask the, um, counselor to come to the meeting, uh, to speak at a meeting so we can meet him? I know, uh, being remote makes it difficult, okay? Um, Mr. Ambassador, anybody else?
No, Reggie, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Reggie Nunn, representing the Ro-Hall Neighborhood Development Corporation, seventeen H Street. Uh, we believe the good project, uh, the project has two, uh, three things. It creates additional housing in neighborhood, uh, it eliminates light, and it increases revenue for the, uh, for the city of, uh, for support of this project.
Hope everything well, is well read.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands, thanks.
I'm Kim, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Councilor, going record and support.
Okay, um, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, with BPDA design review, uh, and looking at site plan as well, um, for screening and buffering.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
And, uh, Mr. Legris has refused. I am in support, so motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now eleven thirty-four. I'm going to call the eleven-thirty cases for any deferrals or withdrawals. So, if you have a case that are eleven-thirty, if you are withdrawing or deferring, if you can give me the address for us, please.
Twenty Hinckley Street?
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA one-two-five-eight-six-three-eight, twenty Hinckley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Tuscano with an address of eleven Beacon Street. We are seeking, if possible, a short deferral. We got contacted by the counselor's office. Um, he did receive calls from some neighbors that had additional concerns, so we need to meet with his office and those folks to try to address these.
Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, I defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye, defer.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I two in support, some, um, the motion for deferral carries. The date, please?
Counselor, we do have one open date for August ninth, does that work?
That should be fine.
That is the earliest we can get you in.
Okay.
All right, so August ninth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Uh, are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the eleven-thirties?
Uh, yes.
Name and address, please?
Um, Five Magnolia Place.
For the record, calling DOA one-two-eight-zero-four-two-three-Five-Magnolia Place. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Akash Lala, homeowner, uh, at Five Magnolia Place.
Okay, um, it's, is there a reason for your request for deferral again? Is this your second or third request?
Uh, second request for deferral, uh, this is for administrative reasons.
Okay, got it, okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Rogiro, got you. Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I two in support, so the motion for deferral carries, uh, the date, please?
We can do August twenty-third at eleven-thirty.
Okay, August twenty-third.
Okay.
Eleven-thirty.
Eleven, oh, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the eleven-thirty hearings? Hearing none, go back to the next two cases, calling DOA one-three-three-nine-zero-five-nine-twenty-five Barry, Barry Street. There is a companion case, DOA one-three-three-nine-zero-six-seven-fifty-two Bellevue Street. This is for twenty-five Barry Street, to subdivide an existing lot of six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-one square feet into two lots. Lot A, twenty-five Barry Street with an existing three-family dwelling shall have three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and Lot B, fifty-two Bellevue Street vacant lot, will have three-thousand-eighty-one square feet. There will be a new three-family dwelling built on Lot B, fifty-two Bellevue Street. Violation, Article sixty-five, section seven, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section seven, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section seven, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for fifty-two Bellevue Street. To erect a three-family dwelling on a newly created three-thousand-eighty-one-square-foot lot, building will be fully sprinkled. The violation, Article sixty-five, section seven, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section seven, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section seven, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section seven, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section seven, the building height is excessive. Article sixty-seven, section seven, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article sixty-five, section seven, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section seven, the side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section seven, the rear yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking design. And Article sixty-five, section forty-two, conforming with existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, I'm Attorney Derek Smith, Paul. The business is just a, one option, uh, entry mass. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to subdivide the parcel at twenty-five Barry Street, erect a new three-family dwelling at two-Bellview Street on the newly created parcel. Um, zoning sub-district here is to three-F five-thousand. Again, uh, the new lot created will create... Again, uh, the new lot created will create, will have, um, two thousand six hundred and eighty-one square.
So, 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 I just wanna make sure everything is clearly on the record. At Twenty-five Barry Street, there is an existing three-family. Will there be any, um, modifications to anything like parking or anything, um, triggered by this proposed subdivision?
Not at Twenty-five Barry Street, Madam Chair.
Okay, and so the subdivision then puts, uh, Twenty-five Barry into zoning violation with lot area insufficient, FAR excessive, and rear yard insufficient.
That's correct.
So tell us what the rear yard is, uh, required for zoning and what is being proposed?
Well, Madam Chair, rear yard, um, requirement, zoning subdivision is twenty feet. We are proposing five as a result of the subdivision.
You propose five feet for the rear yard?
That is correct.
Okay, so let's talk to us about Bellevue then.
Okay. With regard to Fifty-two value, Bellevue, excuse me, it's a three F five thousand zone. Again, the new lot is, the, the three thousand six hundred eighty-one square feet. The violations are as follows. A lot width, block footage, requirement is forty feet, we are at thirty-eight feet. With regard to the, uh, FAR, the required FAR is zero point five, we are proposing zero point eight one. With regard to, uh, the building height, requirement is two and a half stories, thirty-five feet. We are proposing three feet, three stories, thirty-nine and a half feet. Um, and Madam Chair, that is being measured from the mean grade as the, uh, topography of the land slopes. Um, with regard to the front yard requirement, the front yard requirement is fifteen feet. We are proposing five, which is modal to some of the other buildings, uh, in that area. Side yard, um, violation, requirement is ten feet. We are proposing five on one side, five feet, eighteen feet on the other side, which includes driveway. Rear yard again is twenty feet, and we are proposing fourteen feet.
I'm sorry, the rear yard is twenty and you're proposing fourteen?
That's correct.
Okay, and tell us about how the par, how many parking spaces are going to be provided?
We are proposing three off-street parking spaces, two inside the building and one outside of it. And there's, we're creating a driveway on the left-hand side, this is including on Bellevue. Again, the topography of the land slopes down, and so we park two inside and one outside of the block.
Any roof decks proposed?
Uh, none.
And given that there's a slope, any occupancy in the basement?
None, no occupancy in the basement. Madam Chair, and the three units will consist of three bedrooms, two baths, and approximately one thousand square.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, I think, uh, obviously, the only real question in my mind is the sort of subdivision and the rear yard setback for Twenty-five. Uh, Fifty-two is set, I think, about eighteen feet off of the property line, so between the buildings is closer to twenty-two feet or something, but, um, no real questions on the proposed layout or scope of the addition, or the new building on the other street, so.
Okay, thank you, any questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Denise Sanz from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, I would like to on record and state that the applicant did meet with Direct the Butters back in January twenty-twenty-two, as well as the association, Greater Vote in Geneva. Greater Vote in Geneva at this time would like to remain neutral. Um, Direct the Butters was concerned around just density and parking around this area. At this time, our office would like to defer any judgment to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, do you have a raised hand here? Um, Anna, are you looking to give testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Okay, um, Anna, did you, were you looking to give testimony here?
Hi Jessica, can you make me a bond, I'm sorry.
Oh, and, oh, didn't realize it was you, okay.
Please can.
Alright, thanks. And then, uh, sorry, I have a raised hand from Church Board, are you looking to give testimony here? Hi Church Board, so your hand is raised, can you, okay, can you, say one more?
Reverend John Odoms, um, speaking on behalf of Pilgrim Church. Uh, Pilgrim Church Carcine is at Forty-six Bellevue Street, so two doors down, uh, from the proposed, um, lot. Couple of things, one of which is that it is a very densely occupied area. And where the driveway would be coming out is at a bend in Bellevue Street, right about where, uh, Kane Street cuts in, so it will be a da, more dangerous intersection. Um, because it's congested also, um, with the closeness to the Butters. Uh, I'm also gonna mention at this point in time, um, that that area has historically been Meeting House Hill Civic Association and has been a primary neighborhood association for that area for decades, and I did not hear there.
Okay, thank you, um, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services was meet, tell us about Meeting Hill?
Um, Meeting House Hill does fall into a different catchment area than this. This is technically Greater Vote in Geneva's.
Okay, got it.
Catchment area.
Okay, uh, anybody else, Miss Ambassador?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hampton, I have a question for you. Um, you know, you know, um, this, this subdivision creates a non-conforming lot at Twenty-five Barry. Any sense of the neighborhood and how many of these can possibly be triggered, um, through, you know, through of these kind of subdivisions? Because this was a very comfortable conforming lot at Twenty-five Barry, and now we have, we've, um, created one significantly non-conforming lot as far as rear yard is concerned, um, and then one, um, you know, three-family dwelling. Any sense, um, Mr. Hampton? Uh, is Mr. Hampton on? No. Jeff, are you on? Nope, I guess we've lost him. Okay, um, given this information, may I have a motion, please?
I, I'll make a motion, um, to approve, um, I think there can be some work done on, again, the site planning, um, in terms of the, the, I think the, I, I'm not as concerned by the access point as the gentleman mentioned, I think it's sort of at the edge, it's not directly aligned with Kane Street, but I do think there can be some, um, better work done on the site planning and the screening and buffering between the two properties. Um, so I'd make a, a motion to approve with BPA design review, specifically looking at site planning of the buildings.
At, at site planning, okay. Okay, um, may I have a second?
Hey, Ken Ligris?
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two am in support, so the motion for approval with design review with specific attention to site planning and screening and buffering carries, good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, have a good day.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-three-one-five-one-zero-eight-sixty-nine-Houghton Street. This is constructed two, new two-family residential building, off-street parking. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section ten dash one, the limitation of area, five-foot buffer. Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking, maneuvering. Article sixty-five, Section sixty-five dash fourteen, traffic visibility, point three across the corner. Article sixty-five, Section sixty-five dash four-one, point four, parking in the front yard. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-five, Section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulginie, uh, on behalf of the applicant, uh, James Baker. Uh, and also with us today is Chris Drew, who's the architect from Six Eight Six Architecture. Uh, Sixty-nine Houghton Street.
Just a question, has this particular property been before this board before?
No, it hasn't, Madam Chair.
It hasn't, okay, so tell us what's being proposed?
Sure, it's Sixty-nine Houghton Street in Dorchester, the zoning in this neighborhood is two F five thousand. This lot size is three thousand four hundred and thirty-five square feet. The proposal is to build a new two-and-a-half-story, two-unit condo with four off-street parking spaces on this vacant lot. This proposal is located at the corner of Houghton and Towsborough Streets. Uh, as far as the neighborhood, it's a true mix of ones, twos, and threes. We have three families to the left and all similar sized lots, uh, to this two-family proposal. I'll touch on the violations that Mr. Fortune just read, uh, lot size, um, it's five thousand, it's required in the zoning with three thousand four hundred and thirty-five square feet. FAR point five, we're at point seven-four. Front yard is fifteen, we're at two-seven. Side yard on the right side is ten, we're at five.
Sorry, it's two, so front yard is, is what, please?
Uh, it's, um, two point seven.
Front yard proposed, what's required?
Uh, fifteen.
And is that modal?
Um, there's a, you know, uh, James Baker's with me here, um, the lots, if you want to comment on that?
It, it varies quite, quite a bit, quite a, quite a few of the homes are, are very similar in terms of just set back a few feet.
Okay.
There's no, there's no real model, it, it varies, the housing stock is, is quite varied.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, um, uh, sorry, um, uh, side yard, Madam Chair, on the right, uh, ten feet's a lot, we're five, but that is actually the street side, and then rear yard is twenty required, we're at eighteen point five. Um, we, obviously, the visibility around the corner, because we're at the front, and then the parking, with the front yard parking, the reason being, the access to this property is off of Towsborough Street, so the parking isn't the rear, just, it is, as, you know, because it's on a corner, it has two front yards technically. The, um, unit one is one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet, it's two bed, two bath. There is a TV, uh, room in the basement with a bath, storage. The basement ceiling height's at eight feet, uh, there's no, uh, bedrooms or anything in the basement. Unit two's eleven hundred and thirty-five square feet, um, that is from, uh, a three-bed and a two-bath, and that is relegated to the second floors, and, um, that's it.
Okay, and, um, let me just, because I'm just curious about that bonus room. Um, it looks like it has front windows, side window, um, tell us about the, um, how far above grade it is, because, you know, honestly, we don't wanna see bedrooms in the basement, um, you know, creeping into basements.
No, I agree, uh, Madam Chair, it is, uh, the window is forty-four inches off of the floor. It's a full egress window, um, in the basement, and as I said, it's eight-foot ceiling height.
The, the way the lot slopes, Madam Chair, it's higher in the back and slopes way dramatically down in the front, so in the front area of the house, it's a full window, full height, uh, access, egress, window.
And what's your height of the built, proposed building height?
Uh, we're, uh, thirty-four feet.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, uh, yep, I can confirm, it is, you know, there is quite a bit of drop along, um, Towsborough Street. So, one question on the access for the parking, uh, through the rear. So you're, you're utilizing an adjacent parcels curb cut, and you have an easement to access that? Is that how, am I reading that correctly? Sorry, for some reason it's... Did you hear my question, Counselor? Am I frozen?
No, we can hear you, I think, um, John might be frozen.
I just had a question on the access to the parking.
I'd ask you for one second, um, Mr. Robinson, I apologize for that.
No worries.
Yeah, so there is an easement, um, that is already recorded, the registered deeds, and has been.
Got it, and it's, it's kind of using an, an additional, a curb cut?
That's correct. Okay, got you. The existing, the existing curb cut, we're not adding a curb cut to it, yep.
And, and the retaining wall on the front, on Houghton Street, I understand there's slope grade, that, that, that's not sort of setting up a, a front yard parking access off the Houghton or anything, is that right, with the?
No, the only access is, uh, off of Towsborough.
Okay, uh, no further questions from me on the proposal, thanks.
Any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, George Twinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, at the Butters meeting in April, a couple residents expressed desire for a single-family home and as few as two parking spots, citing lot size and traffic impact. Our office received two letters of support and one in opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment, thank you.
Okay, um, my, I do have a few raised hands, so, mine, I go ahead?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, mine operates with a carpenter's union, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Um, Tim, I sent a request, I'll meet you, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tim Mari of Butter, eighty-four Houghton Street, speaking in opposition. Uh, my primary concern is the loss of visibility across the intersection of Houghton and Towsborough Street. As I'm sure you're aware, the Murphy School is at the bottom of Towsborough Street. All the buses, as well as countless cars, pedestrians crossing the intersection going to and from the school. Uh, loss of visibility at this critical intersection will surely result in accidents and injuries. I strongly encourage you to deny these variances. I also caution against approval with proviso for additional design review to result, to use for visibility across the corner. Uh, the board did that for the development being constructed currently at the bottom of Towsborough Street, across from the Murphy School. Uh, the resulting buffering of the building corner did not result in adequate sight lines across that corner and the overall design aesthetic of the Champlin First Level and Canada Leaver Upper Level, this is part test. And also, just to correct the record, uh, this lot was previously before the board, a number of years ago, under a previous owner. Uh, at that time, there was a proposal for a single-family residence, and the board at that time denied, uh, those variances, uh, due to the size of the lot. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I, I'm sorry I missed it, uh, we do have letters of, uh, opposition.
Okay, thank you, and Jessica Cookson, Jessica?
Hi there, my name is, um, Jessica Cookson, I'm at one thirty-six, one thirty-eight Napontet Ave. And we are in support of this project due to, um, increasing the demand in housing, and we think that design fits well into the neighborhood.
Thank you, Jessica Witter?
Yes, I'm also a resident at one thirty-six dash one thirty-eight Napontet Ave, and I will comment on a few things. One, I trust James' judgment, um, what he's been doing to this neighborhood, it's really changed. I have a young child, I walk these roads frequently. Um, I feel as though it's been, it's been pretty safe, even with adding that new development that was at the bottom. One suggestion you could talk about is actually adding another stop sign at Towsborough Corner. That would, I think, make everyone stop at that intersection rather than having it a straight route. If someone had an issue with that, I think that would slow down that traffic on that one road, if, if those ability is an issue. Um, and again, I'm also a local Realtor and, and full support of needing more housing in this location, and, uh, I think that's.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, um, anybody else, Miss Ambassador?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, could Mr. Baker just?
I have one.
Um, can I, Bob D'Amico, uh, your hand is raised, are you going to, do you have something to say?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Um, we can work with the applicant to install proper signage to make this a very, uh, safe area. We've done it before, and, and we'd be glad to do it again if this is approved by, uh, the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I speak.
I may offer one additional comment?
No, 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 uh, comments from community, let's have just last comments from the developer in response to the concerns raised by the community, can everybody lower your hand, please?
Madam Chair, thank you for the time.
Yeah, go ahead.
We, this lot has never been on, uh, the ZVA previously, just to confirm that, that it's never been on. Um, we would be happy to work with BTD.
We would be happy to work with BTD to try and make sure that intersection is safe as possible.
And if this gets approved, I want to make sure that they go, there is a robust design review on it so that it's an asset to the neighborhood. Okay, so, Ms. Ambassador, can everybody be muted? May I have a motion from the board members?
I'll make a motion to approve with design review. Looking at, I think, the site plan in terms of the parking. I think abutting up to the adjacent building behind, there's a lot of blacktop there. So hopefully, they can do a little bit better job with screening and buffering and vegetation. And then I think working with Mr. D'Amico and BTD on ensuring a safe corner. I think there also could be some site plan issues in terms of maybe terracing the wall down for better visibility at the corner. So I think good site plan review with BTD and BPDA will help resolve some of the issues and design review.
Care a second?
Second, Lady Griss.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
I tune him in support, so the motion carries. It is now noon time on the news. The board will take a 15-minute break and will reconvene at 12:15.
Thank you.
Recording stopped. Mr. Fortune, please go ahead.
Calling next case, calling BOA 132-8368, 88 Chesterfield Street. This is reconfiguration on the second floor. Violation is Article 69, Section 9. Front yard is insufficient, and Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board, my name is Robinson Asser. 55 Holden Street, our Horizon Construction, I am a former contractor. Before-mentioned address, meaning Chesterfield Street, for the Sultan Finner. All as well, she is the homeowner. The scope of work here basically is that this is a, it's a one-and-a-half-story home where there's two bedrooms on the second floor. Their family's expanding, so they're looking to reconfigure the second floor to create four bedrooms. So they're looking to increase it from two to four bedrooms. So we're looking at building a full-height second floor with an added crawl space for the HVAC system to service that second floor.
Okay, so it's going to be on the exact same footprint as the building currently is?
That is correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, very straightforward, no questions for the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants completed the community process and they notified all the Butters of their proposal back on May 17th. And they also attended the Read, Fill, Watch Neighborhood Community Meeting on May 19th, where they did receive full support from the group. Our office has received one letter or one testimony in support of this project, which has been sent to the board for review. And at this time, we would like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have that one letter, the Mayor's Office will go.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Yeah, and I think we do have some emails that came in in support. So, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, I think with BPDA design review, just to make sure the proportions of the windows and the addition are good. So that's about it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Legris?
Aye.
Okay, I tune him in support, so the motion for approval with design review carries unanimously, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 130-6699, 654 Coming Highway. This is an interior/exterior renovation, repainting, bombing room, and location of existing garage. Construction of a new garage. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of an unaccomplished unit. Article 60, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 60, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Leslie Delaney Hawkins with the law firm of Prince Lebel Ty, having a business ad- Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Leslie Delaney Hawkins with the law firm of Prince Label Ty, having a business address of One International Place. With me is Rebecca Ridley, who is the owner and operator of Davis Funeral Home, and Edison Ribero, our contractor. What is before you is an existing nonconforming use, the Davis Funeral.
Ms. Hawkins, just, I'm gonna recuse myself from this.
Okay, for the record, Mr. Regiro has recused himself, this is a six-member board, so you need five members in support. You can go ahead today, or you can request for a seven-member board.
We will move forward, if that is okay, Madam Chair.
That is fine with us, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, so this is an existing nonconforming use, the Davis Funeral Home has been operating at this location for nearly seventy years, with Ms. Ridley operating it for the last approximately twenty. We're here before you today seeking relief to construct a handicap accessible bathroom in order to better serve our patrons. And what this requires is the relocation of the existing bombing room to the space that currently houses the garage for the hearse. And in order to do that, we're going to be constructing a new garage at the rear of the property. The total additional square footage is three-hundred-ninety-five-point-two square feet. There are no other changes to either the footprint, the structure, or to the operations.
So, hold on, hold on, Mr. Delaney Hawkins, can you tell us which drawing we should look at so that we understand this more completely?
Absolutely, and I know Edison is on as well. I would direct your attention to, and let me just pull it up, I apologize. So if you're looking at, on the plans on file, page one is your plot plan, and if you go to page three, you can see the existing first-floor floor plan.
Okay, how about the proposed?
So the proposed, if you go to page five, this will show you the new first-floor plan.
Okay.
And then six and seven provide you the elevations, the proposed new elevations.
Okay.
Eight shows you the changes to the roof that would be included.
So is that garage door facing the street, or is it in the back?
It is in the rear.
It's in the rear, okay, okay, cool. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, just one question, on the site plan, you have a much larger lot in the back that seems, is that off your property, or is that your property, just a different parcel?
That is not our property.
Ah, city of Boston, I see, I got you.
That is the present property.
I see, okay, and you have the use of that park, is that how you park?
We're in discussions, that's not part of where anything is being located today, and none of our property, none of our physical structure is on that, and we're in discussions with the city regarding that parcel.
Okay, the proposed is quite straightforward, no questions for me, and the garage is on the side.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Eric James with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for six-fifty-four Cummins Highway had an butters meeting on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and met with the Greater Matipan Neighborhood Council on April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. The applicants have completed the process and has the full support of the GFMC, and with that, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jordan Free is sheriff and councillor of Ricardo Arroyo's office, would like to go on record in support of this, thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with design review.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
He's recused.
Recused.
Oh, I'm sorry, got it, yes, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I two in support, so the motion for approval with design review carries unanimously, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Calling the last three cases at ten-thirty, calling BOA one-three-two-four-seven-two-zero-one-twenty Glendower Road. There are two companion cases, BOA one-three-zero-four-three-nine-five-one-twenty-four Glendower Road. Case BOA one-three-two-four-one-three-six-one-twenty-four Glendower Road. This is for one-twenty Glendower. This is new construction with two-family dwelling with four parking spots and curb cut and driveway. The violation, Article sixty-seven, section nine, open space is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, dimensional regulations. Article sixty-seven, section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. This is for one-twenty-four Glendower. This is subdivided into two lots, being known as one-twenty Glendower. Violation, Article sixty-seven, section nine, side yard insufficient. For one-twenty-four Glendower, this extension of living space into the attic, dormer, basement. The violation, Article sixty-seven, section nine, open space is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, floor area ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, we have two raised hands here. Pat, are you here to?
I think it might be you, I look.
You are, okay.
Oh, you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, oh, one second, um, this is, there's something else.
It's you.
Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
This is Pat Fisher, can you hear me all right?
Oh, yeah.
Are you the applicant?
No, I'm the applicant.
I need here from the applicant first, please.
Hi, my name is Olson, Lucian, eight Parkview Terrace, Mountain.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
Okay, so there's three things I'm proposing to do here. The first is, I was adding a dormer to the existing building, and.
And how many units in that building?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family, so you want to extend living space not only into the attic, but into the basement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so tell us about the proposal to extend into the attic, what is, what is the intent of the use of the attic?
Just adding a dormer.
I know, but is there bedrooms up there, what's up there?
Oh, yeah, proposed, proposing, what is it, one bedroom, two bedrooms up there, and a bathroom, but a small office.
So how many bedrooms in that unit?
The unit would have three.
Okay, okay, and then tell us about the basement, what's the proposed use of the basement?
Oh, the proposed use for the basement is to have two bedrooms and a bathroom down there and a laundry.
Two bedrooms and a bathroom in the basement, tell us the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
It's gonna be eight feet, I think.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-sill height? To the window sill height?
Oh, the window height is gonna be egress forty-eight. My architect, I could defer to my architect for that, she has all the.
Yes, please, whoever your architect is, put your name and address on the record.
Yes, my name is Pat Fisher, I'm with Fisher Associates Architects, thirty-five Fisher Road in Weymouth. One-twenty-four Glendower Street is an existing eighty-five-hundred-square-foot lot in a neighborhood that is zone two-F-five-thousand, and it is a neighborhood of mostly multifamily homes. My client is looking to subdivide this into two lots, one of four-thousand square feet, one of forty-five-hundred-forty-eight square feet.
I'm sorry, so, so, so when, since we are at one-twenty-four, what's the square foot proposed for that lot?
That's four-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight square feet, and that has the existing two-family house on it.
Okay, and the, and one-twenty Glendower is proposed as?
As a two-family house, four-thousand-square-foot lot.
Okay, so tell us, speak through, through the basement, proposed basement extension at one-twenty-four?
Yes, at one-twenty-four, we will have two units, the first floor in the basement will be one unit, the second floor and the currently occupied attic will be the second unit.
Okay, so tell us about the, what the use of the basement space?
The basement will, and that is drawing, that's drawing A-seven, if you want to scroll to that. So the basement will have two bedrooms, a small sitting area, and a bathroom, and possibly a laundry. Yes, that's it on the left-hand side.
Okay.
The lot slopes dramatically from the back down to the street, so we could possibly have all windows that are not egress well windows. I am showing one window.
So what are you showing in this drawing?
On this drawing, I'm showing the two bedrooms, and three of the windows will be normal egress windows, without an egress well. The window in the far back on the left side will probably need an egress well.
Okay, so you said it slopes dramatically in the rear?
Yeah, from the rear down to the front, and if you look at drawing A-five, you can see that slope.
And tell us about that utility room, is that just for this unit in the basement?
Yes, just for this unit, as a two-family, there's no sprinkler required.
Okay, so the, the challenge I'm having is that this is a two-F-five-thousand, and you're taking a lot and creating two substandard lots, which will remove any rights for future owners to do anything on their property essentially, without coming to this board. And so you, so there are both, both properties now have a lot area insufficiency, lot width insufficiency, et cetera, et cetera. So we, just keep that in mind as you proceed with the presentation on one-twenty Glendower Road.
Correct, so the, the new building at one-twenty Glendower Road, and that's drawings A through five on the other set of plans. It's the same situation, the basement in the first floor will be the one unit, here's the basement plan, and I'm gonna suggest we swap the rear bedroom and the family room, so we don't need an egress well for that rear bedroom. And that will make those, both of those bedrooms, again, the lot slopes, both of those bedrooms will have normal egress windows.
Yeah, and just so that you know, this, this board is not very keen on bedrooms in the basement, especially, very especially when there's new construction. So please then go ahead and talk about everything else.
Okay, so this building will also have two units, there will be three-bedroom units, the basement in the first floor is one unit, the second and, well, third-floor attic will be the second unit. And both of these attics are half-story, so the square footage is half of the floor below. But this will, again, like I said, there'll be living room, dining room, kitchen, three bedrooms, two bathrooms. The lots do contain enough parking for spaces for each building, there is some exterior open space, proper to code egress.
Sorry, please tell us how the parking is going to work?
Oh, do you have the site plan there by any chance?
Please tell us which drawing to go to.
It's a different drawing, it's by Boston Survey, do you have that?
Was that the first, first in the package?
There it is, oh, yeah, okay, so that's the existing site, obviously, right now it's one lot. That shows the subdivision, it doesn't show the other building, okay, we're still not showing the building.
Oh, that's not the one, it's different.
Yeah.
That's the first one. It's the only that shows the driveway.
Yeah, um, can you?
So there's no proposed shared driveway?
Yeah, there is.
There is, it is a shared driveway, is it?
No, not a shared driveway.
Okay, okay.
I have the current plan here, can you see it on the screen?
No, there's no screen sharing on this, okay.
I'm, I'm holding it up to the, to the camera. There's, there's.
Madam Ambassador, it's the, the plans with the blue plans, the last page is the site plan with both, so it's one of the other piles.
All right, thank you.
The last page in this package.
Oh, there we go, okay, oh, well, there is actually one that's been done by George Collins, but this is in essence, yeah, what he drew. Yeah, there is a, so there's gonna be two separate driveways, two separate parking areas at the rear.
And also tell us this, that you have an eight-foot side yard on the proposed dwelling, how far is that from the dwelling on the other side?
Oh, boy.
Well, there's a driveway in between that, too.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So it's about sixteen feet, I'll tell them.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are, we just went through them, I think, you know, they're a little bit, a little bit confusing. I, you know, I do question if we can really get full egress windows in the basement as, as the proponent is sort of, it is a sloping lot, but it's just hard to tell, because I don't have that, that information. In terms of the proposed building and, and the subdivision, I don't really have too many questions about that, but I do have a question about how to manage the, the lower-level units.
Is that, that's in both, both proposals?
Yes, yes.
Got it, okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Mr. Robinson is saying, I'm looking at the Google Maps picture, and there's no way that there's a walkout in the front. The, the grade is, it's above grade, but not all that significantly, so that I don't think, and if it slopes dramatically uphill toward the rear, then, then would be even more of a problem. So I, I just, I don't think the bedrooms are gonna work.
Okay, thank you, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ushin Ochi, and I'm the Roseland liaison with the Mayor's Office. We held a meeting for the one-twenty-four Glendower Division portion on April eighteenth, and the one-twenty Glendower Road Division portion on May twenty-fifth. For the one-twenty-four Glendower Road meeting, there were concerns about property lines, but that seems to have been addressed by the property owners. For the one-twenty Glendower portion, there were concerns about the property line again, and there were talks of maybe going to an assessing office. There are also concerns over parking spaces. But through looking at the plans, look, actually ended up creating four spaces because of the driveway. And the Mayor's Office will be deferring judgment to the board, thank you.
Mr. Ambassador?
I do have a raised hand. Yep.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Lucian, partial owner, licensed realtor.
Okay, hold on, Mr. Lucian, if you're the applicant, we, we don't, kindly don't want to hear from you, okay?
That would be.
Want to hear from in a butter, sorry about that.
Okay.
Altiak Nodaro, are you here to give testimony for this project?
I am indeed, good afternoon, members of the board, Madam Chair. I am in a butter at one-thirty Cornell Street in Roselandale, and I am, let's say, in ardent opposition to this project. It turns, the so-called one-twenty Glendower Road turns one-twenty-four Glendower into, as you said, Madam Chair, a nonconforming site, lot. And there simply isn't enough room to shoehorn another two-family whose foundation would go rather deeply in. another two-family whose foundation would go rather deeply into the ground. It is a great burden to the abutting neighbor at 118, as well as to the rest of the neighborhood. Glendower is a one-way street. There's a school just past the intersection with Kittredge. It is not the scale for this neighborhood to squeeze these properties together on the, on that one lot, quite frankly. And the topography, yes, we would be handed eight cars on a platter above everything else. So it would be, in terms of variances, two and a half feet in some areas between the two buildings. I think you run into some fiber code issues there. And it's not a city. This is a more, this is a more residential scale for Boston. And, you know, yes, we do need more housing in Boston area, but we cannot, we cannot sanction greed and opportunism, which is what this project represents. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no additional raise hands. Oh, I'm sorry, a hand was just raised. Connie, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal? I sent a request to unmute you.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you switch your full name and address for the record, please?
I'm Constance Borab at 118 Glendower. I'm the immediate butter. And I also have grave concerns about the division of the lot. The house at 124 will be two feet away from the proposed property line. And I also have concerns about a two-family on 120 because it requires as many variances as the non, the request for the non-conforming lot at 124. I know Mr. Lucian said in one of the abutters meetings that he wanted to build something, have the, a design of something for 120 that wouldn't require any variances. But as you can see, it's many. The other concern, I know where, I, I don't know where the curb cut is supposed to go on 120 and how many parking spaces that would be lost because of the curb cut. And I will tell you, parking on Glendower, almost every space right now is occupied by residents.
So let me just ask you a quick question. On Glendower is a one-way, is there parking on both sides of the street?
Yes, there is.
So that really narrows the passageway then for, for, for travel?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, I do have no additional raise hands.
Anybody from the City Council's office? Mr. Fortune, any, I know we've gotten a number of emails and opposition.
I have nothing.
Oh, okay, because a number of emails came through last few days, okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please? Let's start with the basic, the basic trigger on all of this is the, the BOA 1304395, 124 Glendower Street, Ward 18, which is a request to subdivide this lot into two lots. Is there a motion for, to approve this or not?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion on all three because they're companion cases to deny without prejudice.
To deny all of them without prejudice? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, that makes it easier. Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rugiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Aye.
I tune in support of that motion, so it carries unanimously. Thank you.
I call the first case to rediscussion. Calling BOA 1255773, 753 East Broadway. This is a proposed renovation to change art from a restaurant with takeout and office space with restaurant and takeout, two dwelling units. Violation of Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, the Secretary, Madam Chair, Members' Board, Attorney Joe Hanley, 28 State Street in Boston. With me is the owner of the property, Joy Lee. Also with me is Devin Riley Marini, who is the project architect. May I give you an overview and explain the project, Madam Chair?
Yes, and please tell us why you would defer to.
Yes, thank you very much. So we had deferred back in June. Before the board, we were asked to seek a deferral by District City Counselor Flynn to address community concerns with regard to onsite parking. And we're pleased to come back with what we think are some viable solutions for that.
So tell us what, tell us then what the, the project looks like today.
Yes, ma'am. So current project, as you'll see, the photo of the existing condition on the left, this is an existing three-story mixed-use building at the corner of L and East Broadway in South Boston. It is an existing non-conforming structure, meaning that it occupies most of the lot. It is located in an MFR LS. And what the project seeks to do is merely to change the occupancy on the top two levels that you'll see there to an allowed residential use. And what is being proposed is two residential units. There are floor-throughs, one on each floor, to replace what is vacant commercial space that, due to the pandemic, there's not a lot of need for. But more importantly, we're obviously in a residential area. The units themselves.
Tell us about the local, the, the restaurant with takeout?
Yeah, so nothing proposed there. That's an existing restaurant, the Bagel Company that is there. No changes to that. So the change of use is for the top two levels and for, obviously, interior renovations. There is no work to the existing structure with respect to any of the zoning violations. We're not expanding the structure. We have.
So sorry, tell us about your proposal to ameliorate the parking situation, then?
Yes, so the existing lot, no curb cuts, no available parking onsite today. And so what is being proposed to address that is the top-level unit. This is an owner occupancy proposal that Ms. Lee, who runs, is a neighborhood business operator. She runs Moco Restaurant also on East Broadway. And she has a parking space there that she uses for herself. So she'll be moving into the top unit. And then we were able to, since the deferral, we were able to locate two additional spaces that we would be able to lease at 655 East Second Street, which is less than 700 feet from the site. And they are deed-owned, third-party commercial spaces that we are able to lease and provide that second building.
Deed, deed-owned, third-party, what does that mean?
In other words, they're not replacing someone else's parking. They are parking spaces within a structure that are owned separately by a landlord that are rented for monthly parking. And.
Okay, so, so the, I think, I think the question becomes, because I do think that this is a temporary response because I think you've heard us say before that the relief goes with the building and not with the owner.
Yes.
So to memorialize these, these spaces, the other addresses need to come to this board with a request for ancillary parking, with, for ancillary parking. And so, because this is just, in essence, a statement by, by, you know, you as the representative of the applicant about how this is going to be addressed, but it's just, it's just short-term because it's not, it's not memorialized really in any place. Any response to that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you for that. I understand that. You know, the fact is, this is an existing building in a residential zone with vacant commercial space that would not otherwise conform to zoning. This board has talked about creating housing of a scale that would be amenable for families. These are proposed to be three-bedroom units. Each are 100.
You know, thank you, nice try, nice try.
But, but candidly, I, I think, you know, you also have to consider that perhaps the most popular best route happens to be right in front of this property.
No, I, I, I have, I honestly, you know, Mr. Hanley, I'm just glad you're not proposing T-passes, subsidized T-passes, et cetera, et cetera. But the thing is, this, you know, until the owner at 655 East, East Second Street finds he can get a higher dollar for it or there's a demand in his building for it, those are going to vanish in about a second and a half. And, you know, we know that this, for now, is owner-occupied and the owner has a dedicated space at her business. But should she sell her business, you know, then what? She's stuck, you know? Or should she sell the unit? You know, that new owner is stuck because it's not deeded in any way, you know? So, you know, I would suggest that, you know, if, if there is going to become a response to this off-street parking thing in, anywhere in the city, that it be actual, an actual response and not a, you know, a shoot-from-the-hip response, you know? Because frankly, I'm okay with that this doesn't have parking because I understand that this is an MFR LS.
Yep.
But then I don't live in Easty and for, for, I mean, for, in Southeast. So any South Boston resident, you know, needs to think about these kind of deals twice, you know? So I'll leave it there. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are fine, no, no real question on the proposal. I, I guess I, I'm hopeful that if this is approved, we can get some real design review on the exterior. It's, it's, that, that corner is starting to develop. And I think we want to take a shot at making sure architecturally, this building is sort of preferential to what's happening in the neighborhood. But no, no real questions on the proposed scope.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Anna White. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This project was handled by my predecessor. Our office held the abutters meetings on 228, 2001, and on 414, 2001. I have 34 statements in support of this project from residents of South Boston. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. Council President would like to go on recording support based on the proponents' good-faith efforts and compromises to address parking concerns and quality-of-life issues from the neighbors since the last hearing date. The proposal has gone from four units with no parking spaces down to two units, one of which will be owner-occupied with three parking spaces in the nearby area utilized by the residents that will be living here. Previously, the board rejected this proposal last year. The proposal, the proponents subsequently deferred in May a Council of Presidents Flynn's request due to outstanding and legitimate concerns regarding the existing parking crisis in South Boston and quality-of-life issues. During this time, the owner has indicated she will occupy one of the units and utilize her existing parking spaces in the area. She has also secured two parking spaces for the other unit on its second street. In addition, she has also implemented a pest control plan at the request of the abutters. Council President Flynn understands that there is both support and opposition regarding this proposal. His support stems from these good-faith compromises regarding parking and pest control and also concerns that this is a unique location and another proposal may not be as attentive to the parking crisis. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. City Council is Michael Flaherty. Article 68 went through an extensive community process, and the council approach has been consistent in reference to that. That said, Council Flaherty would like to acknowledge the proponents' changes to address concerns about the plans. Note that there are times when these variances sought may be considered a substantial hardship. Therefore, he would defer it to the board's knowledge of wisdom for understanding and interpreting the zoning laws as it pertains to unnecessary and unintentional hardships. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We do have letters of support, and we do have a few letters of opposition.
Okay, anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
Yep, we have a few raise hands. I'll start with Richard. Can you state your full name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and board. My name is Richard Hayes. I am director butter on 757 East Broadway. And I, I, I listen very closely to what the chair said about the sleight of hand shoots me in the head. And it's, it's, it's spot on. It's a, a, a apparent attempt at trying to rescue something that wasn't enough of an effort put into it. And you have to question whether or not it was really meant to be a, an effort at solving the problem or just kicking the can down the road. This doesn't do anything to start a party. And, and not only that, it, it hasn't changed the occupancy at all. It goes from four units of six bedrooms to two units of six bedrooms. That is still the potential of six people in driving cars in one of the busiest areas in South Boston, one of the most hazardous intersections in South Boston. It is already.
Thank you, sir, thank you. So, you know, I'd love to hear from everybody. However, you know, we try to give each project the time that it takes. So I would like to hear from director butters, direct butters. And I would like for you to give me new information. If you do not have new information, please just put your name and address on the record and tell us if you're in support or in opposition. Okay, I would really appreciate your cooperation. We've been at this since 9:30, but we do want to hear from you. So be brief, please, thank you.
Luann, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Luann O'Connor, President, City Point Neighborhood Association, of which this building was. Madam Chair, this is all new information.
Please, please, Luann, Mr. Connor, support or opposition?
Opposition, but it is very important that you understand that the process, the community process, has not been fulfilled here. This is all new information through us.
Thank you, thank you. I have that on the record, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Norton?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Michael Norton, I own 751, 749 751 East Broadway, and I am in full support.
Thank you.
Greg S.?
Hi, my name is Greg Sorago. I own 34 New Hill Place. I am in a butter. I've been participating in these meetings for a while now. I understand that the original project planned for six bedrooms, this goes back to earlier.
I hope you're going to respect what I've requested of everybody.
Yes, I have.
And tell us if you're in support and, or opposition, and if it's, and give us new information.
Yeah, sure. So I, I am in support, and I think that the motion to do so helps abate the supply constraints in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, caller 781, 270? We have two callers on it. They sent a request to unmute you. I'll go to Frank Cook if, you know. Frank, can you go ahead?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm in full support of the project. I think it just, I believe it was Greg said it. It adds new places that are of actual value to the community and the size of the apartments for the people that will be living there. And I don't think the parking should be initiated. Thank you.
Can you state your address, please, Frank?
47 Gate Street.
Thank you. One more hand, Anthony? One more hand, Anthony? Anthony, I sent a request to unmute you. Are they going to give testimony yet?
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me? Sorry, my name is Anthony Jeff. I reside on East Broadway, approximately about one block from the property. I'm full supporter of this.
What's your address, please? What's your address, please, Anthony?
849 East Broadway.
Okay.
It's a block from the property.
Okay.
And from my experience, most people that live at City Point now, about 80% do not have cars, and so they take public transportation. There's two bounds of public transportation right out front on the corner of Allen and East Broadway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
I'll second it, Ligris.
And can I add robust design review for the exterior upgrades? Because I think that the vinyl siding needs to be removed and the window configuration should be adjusted for the units themselves, so.
I'm happy to accept robust design review.
Robust.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Robust.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro got you with robust. Okay, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ligris?
Yes.
I two him in support, so motion carries. But this is a note to you, Mr. Hanley, because you do represent a lot of projects. To make sure that there is a true process and not, you know, not something that's just temporary, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Motion carries. Okay, good luck.
Understood.
Calling an execute cases, calling DOA 1303471, 49 to 49A Linwood Street. And a companion case, DOA 1336276, 51 Linwood Street. This is for 51 Linwood Street up. This is an existing dwelling at 51 Linwood. This is one of two dwellings on the same lot, violates Article 50, Section 44.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This is for 4949A Linwood. This is new construction of a two-story detached slab-on-grade garage with studio residents above. This is one of two dwellings on the same lot. Violates Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, lot width is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 44.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Keys, 51 Linwood Street, owner. I'm going to defer to my architect, Mike Chavez. He also will state why we deferred from our June appointment.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Mike Chavez, architect at 26 Amhill Park in Dorchester. This is a, Mr. Keys is looking to add a garage, off-street parking for his personal use and thought that he might want to add to, you know, some residents above. So, it's basically a 523 square foot gross, gross square foot studio efficiency essentially on top of the garage itself.
Mr. Chavez, just back up for a minute. What's the zoning district here?
Zoning here is 3F 4,000, and he is an existing single-family.
And he has a one-family, and let me just get sure I have all this, and what's the size of the lot?
7,285 square feet.
Okay, so tell us about this, the detached garage, the size of it, and it's, how many cars does it intend to house? And tell us about the studio residents above.
Sure, so it's about a 523 square foot footprint, gross square foot footprint, or 17 feet by 30 feet. And it's got a single-car garage inside for some additional storage for Mr. Keys's, you know, snow blowers and things like that. And it's got a single stair that takes up to the efficiency studio on the second floor, which has got a small, again, kitchenette. It's like a, you know, two-burner stove kind of thing and small sink and undercounter refrigerator. So, it's just used for friends or family come over, they want to stay, and he doesn't have any room in his house, they can stay there. That's really what the point of it is, a small space, single bathroom, shower. And, yeah.
So, Mr. Chavez, you know that the relief goes with the property?
Correct.
So, this is a small, if we want to consider the studio residence, it's a very small space and, you know, Mr. the, Mr. Key's intention may be for spillover in this company, but should he sell that property, we then have a small unit that is then open to the open market. Can you please just talk us through what protections are in place? Or if there's a way to get this unit to be possibly, you know, more occupancy-friendly?
Sure, yeah, it's, so, you know, Mr. Keys is, this is his forever house, he's staying there. Again, if he had to sell it, however, ideally, this would have gone through what Boston's currently working on, which is the additional, or accessory dwelling unit 2.0, which is detached conversion of garages into, you know, like accessory uses to the main house. And we would have preferred to have gone through that process, but it's just not set up for us to do that yet. So, we're open to having it be an accessory structure to the main house and not having it be a single-family home in and of itself. Its utilities will be connected to the main house. Again, it's providing additional off-street parking for himself and it's going to be shared. You know, that's his garage on the first floor, it's not meant for the unit above. So, it's really meant, it's designed entirely to be an accessory structure to the main house. It's just that there's not a formal process for it to be called that currently in the city of Boston. So, we are open to whatever we can do to make that, like you said, occupancy-friendly for the existing single-family home. Well, if Stephen wants to add in terms of his, you know, D and D restrictions or something.
So, why wasn't it, why wasn't it, why couldn't it be an ADU?
Because it's a new construction and currently that only allows for existing garages. And I actually asked D and D about that and if it could go through that process and they said, because they're focusing on existing buildings, that they wouldn't consider that currently. So, hopefully down the road, this maybe would, you know, had it been a couple more years, maybe, but right now, it's not that.
Got it.
Madam Chair, is there any other assurances? I'm a single, I'm still a bachelor, I'm planning to retire in six years. But if I was to sell this property, it's as one. It's one lot, 7,000 square foot lot, and I'm not going anywhere for a while. And I live and work in the neighborhood. I'm at the bowling building right now, which I'm in, so I walk to work.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's why I thought your name was familiar. Okay, got it, okay. You know, but, you know, as a neighborhood resident and somebody who cares about the community, we totally understand that you're not anticipating going anywhere, but life may have other plans for you, just like it may have for me and as I am in my forever home, you know? And we need to always, as a board, you know, keep that in mind as we look at these proposals. Okay, okay, got it. So, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions. I think everything's been addressed in terms of my concerns. Thanks.
Any questions from the board? You know what I'm having a hard time remembering? If Mr. Robinson or Mr. Olick could help me, is what is the size of a, not a microunit, but the smallest studio or one fam, oh, studio, I would say?
Hang on a second and I'll tell you.
Yeah, I can, I'll have to look it up, too. For some reason, 515 or 525 is in my brain, but that could be wrong, so I don't.
450 for a studio, hang on.
Is that a micro?
No, that's the Metro Studio, a unit 625 for a single bed and 850 for two.
Yeah, that's, Madam Chair, it's Jeff, that's the compact unit.
Yeah, so it falls within those guidelines, okay? And what did the BPDA recommend on this?
I knew you were going to ask that. Hold on just a second, please. So, we recommended approval with proviso just for design review. And at the time, this is when Highland Park became a landmark district. So, we may want to kick it to landmarks so that they can take a look at it, but.
Okay, is Highland Park, okay, got it, okay. Is it landmarks or architectural material?
Yeah, it was just, it was just adopted as a landmarks district.
Okay, okay. Let's see, any other, anything else from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Some background information on the community process. The owners met with the Butters. So, for 49 and 51 Linwood, was supported by the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition and has presented to them multiple times. We just asked the applicant to remain in communication with the coalition throughout the process and we can assist if needed. At this time, we're deferring to the board.
Okay, Madam Chair, you have a raised hand here. Are there any other elected officials giving testimony? Stephen Fox, I sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? You may not be wanting to give testimony here, I'm sorry, I lowered my hand. I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
I think it's because it's, there's now, it's a historic district. We don't need design review, so it's approval. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Yo.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Regiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris? I two him in support, so I wish you good luck. But do keep that in mind as we proceed, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everybody.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 1287036, 1759 to 1763 Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy, multifamily residential 76 unit reduced to 70 on 7522 and commercial restaurant use at ground floor. Restore the historic facade in existing building, construct a new addition above the existing structure up to 13 floors and fill the adjoining parcel, two parcels to be combined. The violation's Article 50, Section 28. Regulations, restaurant use is conditional. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Chair, I'm going to recuse myself in this matter.
So, I will tell the applicant that this is a six-member board and you will need five members in support of your proposal. So, you can either go ahead or request a date when all members are available.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacassla, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. And with respect to your comment regarding the board composition, my clients are both on and I would ask them to give me in the board instruction on whether they wish to proceed with a six-member board in light of Mr. Ligris's recusal. Tom or Jazz, can you chime in?
Yes, we'd like to proceed, please.
Okay, all right, so there's the answer to that, Madam Chair. We were last before this board on April 26 regarding this proposal. And just to give you a brief history and to remind the board members where this project has been in the course.
So, what we would like to do, Mr. Lacassla, scheduled for 11:30, it's now 1:15. So, we want you to help us save some time. We, the last time that you were, we had significant comments about the design and the layout of the units. So, tell us what has been accomplished between the last time you were here and today.
Yes, Madam Chair. On 426, the board expressed concerns regarding the number of compact units and the arrangement and distribution of the IDP units. So, we went back to the BPDA to consult with the IDP staff and to change the unit count and to change the mix of the units and to change the IDP distribution of the units. And substantially redesigned the floor plates of the entire building from its prior hotel use to a proposed residential use. And on those specific items, I'd like D'Artagnan Brown, our architect, who was responsible for engineering all of those changes, to further address your concerns from the prior hearing. D'Artagnan?
So, Mr. Brown, I just want to make sure that Mr. Robinson has the most updated plans?
Yes, he does. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, then go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. D'Artagnan, architect from Embark. If you may forward, please, to the next couple slides. I can speak exactly to the questions raised. I think if you keep going, please. This is great, right here. So, comments raised were again around the number of compact units and design of the interior of the building. This plan demonstrates on the left what was once approved by this board as a hotel project. Plan middle, plan right, show a complete reworking of the core for the residential use, but maintaining the exterior facade design that was both approved by this board and by landmarks, which was, and going back to landmarks, a must-have in terms of keeping the aesthetic of the building on the exterior. If you go to the next page, please. Here, you could see up in the upper right, what we were at back at the last hearing was 76 units. We had 15 studios, 37 1s, 11 1s, and 13 2s. With the reduction in unit count to 70, we dropped the number of studios down to eight, reduced the number of one-bedrooms, kept the 1+es, and significantly increased the 2-bedrooms. This took us from 33 compact units down to 19. In addition.
So, 33 compacts to 19?
Correct, so we lost 14 compact units.
Okay.
And then.
And tell us, I'm sorry, tell us about the compacts. So, they're in the compacts, there are eight studios?
And 11 1-bedrooms, correct.
Okay.
And then, within that, we heard, Madam Chair, the question around distribution of the IDP. So, we reworked that and went back to BPDA and housing review for this new proposed mix, which takes four studios down to two studios for IDP. We had three 1-bedrooms, now we have four 1-bedrooms. We had two 1-bedroom pluses, that's remained. And then we've increased our 2-bedrooms up to two for 1. So, again, it's reduced the studios and increased for the larger units. So, the bottom diagram, if you don't mind slightly scrolling down, shows that even distribution throughout the building, in addition to the hearing in Barrett. So, much more evenly distributed, both by type and location throughout the building. Again, just to reiterate, with an entirely new residential core for the building.
Okay, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. They definitely reflect, as the proponent has just outlined. And I think the reduction in units and the distribution has gone a long way to making the per plan a little bit more understandable and consistent with what I think we discussed at the last hearing, so.
And to confirm, Mr. Brown, the units have gone from 76 units down to 70 units?
That is correct.
Okay.
No further questions from me, thanks.
Sorry, Mr. Robinson.
No, I'll go.
Just like, you know, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, as one of the people who was raising these issues about the number and size of units, I really appreciate the effort that's been done to turn this into a very different project. It's always been beautiful on the outside, the post-exterior. So, I think this is going to be a really welcome addition to the cityscape.
Mr. Hampton, did you have something to say?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton. Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. I'd just like to, uh, go on record saying that the development team was very receptive to the changes that were, uh, brought to them by BPDA staff. And I would like to just go on the record again that we're in full support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of the proposal?
Hi, yes, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Cruzelli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the mayor's office would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. The project has received over one-hundred-and-thirty letters of support from abudders within three-hundred feet of the property, twenty-two letters of support from directly abutting businesses and letters of support from the Claremont, Blackstone, Franklin and Worcester Square area neighborhood associations. This project has had an extensive public process with thirty-nine public meetings and has made sure the wants and needs of the community are met. This project will have a positive impact in the community and will bring much-needed life to the area. Again, we defer to the board on this matter. Thank you.
How about Santiago, go ahead?
Great, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, my name is John Santiago. I'm a resident on three Claremont Street in the neighborhood. I also represent the area for the past four years. And I'm standing in support of this project, uh, once again. Um, as many, this project has the opportunity to revitalize this corner that has been dormant, uh, for decades and particularly when you consider the potential stretching from Washington in the South End all the way down to New Bean Square. This can really be a thoroughfare that is going to provide a whole bunch of economic opportunity for, uh, the community and notwithstanding the fact that two restaurants have closed there in that corner there over the past two years, one of which was minority owner. Um, secondly, the need for more housing, um, I, I can't say enough, as someone who's been fighting for more housing at the city and state level, this is what we need. Once this project became, uh, a housing-focused project versus the hotel, I've been on board and really been advocating to get the community more engaged. And with that said, um, the community's been quite engaged, has been a robust community process, particularly since the last ZBA hearing. Um, folks have been engaged, the proponents have done an excellent job going around meeting with every stakeholder. I appreciate their work and I hope that the ZBA can provide a favorable recommendation. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we, Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have letters of support and opposition. Um, Madam Chair, uh, Joe McGeckra with City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in full support of the project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the City Council, Mike Flaherty, counsel to go on record in support.
Any more letters? Okay, here, none, Stephen Fox, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, I'm Mary Bohemi from, um, Counselor Fernandez Anderson's office. Um, that's the majority of the, of the feedback Counselor Anderson has received from constituents is in support of a project. Um, while none of the minority opposition she's received has come from a Butters. Additionally, this worthwhile endeavor will contain, um, residential units and ten of which will be affordable and the current entities and ISO could readily use the beautification multi-use. Um, in short, Counselor Anderson readily supports the Alexander, Alexander development and looks forward to the time in the near future when the project reaches its fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Fox?
Uh, yes, uh, Steve Fox, I chair the South End Forum, which is the umbrella organization for the combined neighborhood associations of the South End. I was also a member of the IAG for this project for, beginning four years ago. I, 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 um, want to offer my unconditional support for this project, uh, without belaboring what has already been said. This will bring residential ownership opportunities to the South End, which are really, really missing, which we desperately, desperately need. Um, and, uh, this project is an, an example of the best of how to engage the community in a process that ultimately results in a great project. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Carol Strife. I live at five-seven-eight Mass Ave. My house, my front yard is actually shaded by the, uh, by the tower. Um, I want to thank the ZBA for directing the developers to, uh, gain more community input. That community input has resulted from over two-hundred-and-thirty signatures from the Roxbury side of Mass Ave, indicating their opposition to the project for a number of, uh, issues which we've enumerated in written submissions. Having the, the ZBA having directed that the community process be, uh, supplemented, we are now arguing that the ZBA should honor those residents, um, uh, who have indicated opposition and return this project to the BPDA for proper review. We do not oppose developing the corner. We support it. We simply do not support this particular project at this particular height and with a lack of parking and other issues. Thank you very much.
Bill Singleton?
Uh, yes, I would like to go on record, um, of supporting the Alexander, uh, project. I've seen it in its other form and now in its current form. Uh, you and I, neighbors of Roxbury have heard from some of their neighbors and they like to see something there at the corner that will enhance economic development. They've done a good job in reaching out to, uh, stakeholders, uh, and they try to consider people's, um, needs and desires. And so we would like to, uh, wholeheartedly support their efforts to, you know, to create something there that hasn't been there for forty years.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you want to keep going?
Yes, please.
Okay. Garry Centrata?
Hi, um, Colony Four, I'm a long-term Roxbury resident. Um, this process, the entire process, the first day of meeting on the Alexander Hotel, it was determined that it was going to be, um, the South End. The BPDA supported that and even though it was Article fifty and it was a Roxbury project, they did not invite Roxbury Neighborhood Council or Roxbury residents to be part of the process. Well, we know that this location needs to be developed. It needs to be developed with the input of residents on both sides of the aisle. The last, uh, attempt by the BPDA to push this through was to say this is a minor modification that they were looking at, and it really wasn't. So that was just an attempt to get this pushed through as a minor modification. And we know the BPDA is not having a long arms-length relationship with this parcel. It's, it's like they are advising them to do things that are incorrect and totally wrong. Uh, there is no outstanding need except financial for a thirteen-plus-foot building. And, uh, this building would be towering over everything else in the area. If you look at the picture they have, this is the only thing that you'll see on the skyline. And Roxbury residents, two-hundred-plus, have said that they have concerns about this. And for the process to keep moving along with the support of the BPDA, which has an agenda to get this done and to ignore the Roxbury residents, which this process is, a project is cited in Article fifty under the Roxbury's, um, zoning, is incorrect, is, is wrong. It was not a minor modification. There is no indication that parking would be addressed. And parking is one of the, uh, Article fifty's requirements. And I'm not, I'm not sure why the ZBA review letter did not mention parking at all. But this building is, were to go through, uh, there is going to be a hardship on the community with the number of units and the, the height of this building. So, we'd like for the ZBA, BPDA to listen to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Horace representing the Carpenter's Union. On behalf of hundreds of individuals, I would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Louis Alisa, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, my name is Louis Alisa. I'm in the greater Roxbury, um, minority neighbors, uh, Roxbury. And, um, we're in opposition to the proposal as it stands now for issues that have been stated. Not to over-iterate, this is not a minor change, you're moving from a hotel. He says not require parking to, 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 to housing that does require parking. Now, the areas, the, 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 as it is now, the number of churches, businesses and the housing developments in the area would be impacted without a comprehensive housing plan. The role of BPDA is to make sure that development is in, since taking consideration the needs, commands and concerns of the residents of the area. This is the design and development as proposed with the number of units. Do not take that into consideration. I am not sure how.
Thank you.
Would allow that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Alisa. Thank you. Last, last person, please, um, Mr. Masterson.
Yep, Bud, go ahead.
Yes, hello, I'm Bud Larrabee and I live at six-one-seven Massachusetts Ave in Roxbury, Massachusetts. Um, I am an abutter and I have been here in, on Mass Ave since nineteen eighty-five. I'm also the president of Washington Gateway Main Streets. And with Washington Gateway Main Streets, along with this block of Mass Ave, are wholly, uh, in support of this project. Um, Washington Gateway has been pro, uh, pro developments for the last twenty-five years of its existence, from Sheila Grove all the way through Randy, uh, uh, Lethrop, through, um, uh, myself and Mark Lacass, Lacass, who was former president. Uh, this is necessary for, as John Santiago said, for the development and sustaining of businesses in this area. It is a must.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so I, what I would like to say, um, for the residents, um, who live in Roxbury, that you should take up the conversation with the BPDA and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services about what is Roxbury and what is the South End and what is that, um, that middle area. Um, this is not a conversation this board will get, um, in the middle of. So we acknowledge all the voices that we've heard. We've acknowledged all the concerns that we've had. Um, so given that, I would like to get a motion on the table on this proposal.
Motion to. Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second, Eric.
Um, Mr. Fortman?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro jumping the gun again? Um, Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
And Mr. Ligris has recused himself, I two him in support. So the project, uh, carries unanimously for all the sitting voting members. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BLA one-three-zero seven-three-nine-five, twenty-five Gardner Street. This is to construct a new fourteen-unit multifamily dwelling. The violation is Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking and loading. Article fifty-one, section fifty-seven point three, traffic visibility across the corner. Article fifty-one, section nine, the lot areas insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, this is a, sorry, counsel. Madam Chair, this is a back-to-back for me. I'll be recusing myself on this as well.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. My name is George Marant. I'm an attorney with the business address of, uh, three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent City Realty Management. Architectural services are being provided by Tanya Carrier from Calzine Design. I do understand that this is a six-member board and that five of, uh, the six members would need to vote in order for this project to be approved and my client chooses to go forward at this time. This is an application for a new four-story, fourteen-unit rental building at twenty-five Gardner Street in Alston at the corner of Linden Street. Uh, this is one block up from Brighton Avenue and one block over from Harvard Avenue. The lot is seven thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet with an existing three-family dwelling within a three-F four-thousand zoning sub-district, which quickly transitions to Harvard Avenue Community Commercial zoning. Accordingly, the surrounding area is characterized substantially by multifamily and mixed-use buildings of the twenty-nine nearest developed lots within a three-hundred-foot radius. There are eleven two- or three-family dwellings, eleven multifamilies, pre-mixed-use buildings and four commercial buildings. This matter was deferred as it was, uh, initially cited, uh, under Article fifty, erroneously. Uh, this is, of course, Article fifty-one, the Alston, uh, Alston-Brighton, uh, neighborhood article. Uh, it was re-advertised as such. My client, uh, will be providing twenty-one percent IDP affordability rather than thirteen percent required with three of these units being committed as affordable units. The ground floor would consist of two.
Uh, sorry, um, are they all on-site?
Yes, on, on-site. In fact, the, uh, the ground floor would consist of, of two of the proposed IDP units, uh, units one and two of seven-thirty-nine and seven-forty-three square feet respectively. We're working with the city to designate these as artist-live-work units. The remainder of the ground floor would consist of secure bike storage , uh, in the building's main entrance and elevator lobby. The second, third and fourth floors would each consist of four units. So one-bedroom unit of six-hundred-seventy-two square feet, a two-bedroom unit of eight-hundred-seventeen square feet and two three-bedroom units of twelve-twenty-nine and thirteen-hundred-fifty-one square feet. Unit nine on the third floor, uh, is a thirteen-hundred-fifty-one square foot three-bedroom, which is the third designated IDP unit. All units would have access to either balconies.
Hold on, now, Mr. Marancy, so tell us how many one-bedrooms there are, two, twos and threes and, um, their average square footage?
There are two artist-live-work spaces as currently designated with an average square footage of seven-hundred-and-forty-one square feet. There are three one-bedroom units with an average, with, uh, they're, they're all the same, six-hundred-seventy-two square feet, three two-bedroom units of eight-hundred-seventeen square feet and six three-bedroom units with an average square footage of twelve-hundred-ninety square feet. Uh, the three-bedroom IDP unit would be thirteen-hundred-fifty-one square feet.
Sorry, thirteen-fifty-one for the IDP three-bedroom?
Correct.
Okay.
All, all, all the units would have access by the balconies or patio space with over eighteen-hundred square feet of open space provided. Amplified storage for all units would be provided in the building's basement where there would also be, uh, additional eight-bike, uh, and eight-bike, uh, storage and repair room. The roof of the building would be unoccupied. There would be four off-street parking spaces, taking advantage of the site's proximity to complete greenline light rail service in numerous bus, bus stops. There are originally six vehicular parking spaces programmed by during community process. It was requested to eliminate two spaces to allow for a larger enclosed bicycle storage area. There are twelve interior and four exterior bikes, parking spaces at grade, plus again, that, uh, additional room for eight, uh, bike storage and repair in the basement. The zoning relief being sought owes to insufficient lot size, which as I mentioned is seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet, excessive floor area ratio, which is proposed at two-point-three-seven as opposed to point-eight by code, as well as excessive building height. The maximum height under zoning is three stories and thirty-five feet, while being proposed is four stories and forty-three and a half feet, uh, which is quite consistent actually, though, with the existing buildings on the other three corners of this intersection. The proposed front setback is ten feet, while the street modal is actually zero. The required right, rear yard, uh, side yard setback is five feet. It's ten feet required, uh, between structures. Here, the left side setback, which borders on Linden Street, is substantially seven feet. The right side setback is eight feet from the lot line with ten feet of separation distance to the building on the abutting lot. The required rear yard setback, with the shallow lot exception, is just under twenty feet, while the proposed setback is five feet, seven inches to the mixed-use building in the rear. There's a cited violation for traffic visibility across corner. Um, a visibility diagram wasn't included in the submission set of plans, but I believe the site plan bears out that the building is very close to meeting cross-corner visibility requirements. And there is, of course, a, a violation for insufficient off-street parking. Finally, I just want to mention.
Mr. Marancy, you're advising for off-street parking. What's required?
Uh, under, uh, Article fifty-one, two spaces for dwelling units. So there would be twenty-eight parking spaces required, which, uh, essentially would convert the, the lot to a parking garage. Yeah, there, there's just no room.
Got it.
And, and finally, I did want to mention that my clients will also be granting a pedestrian easement to the city of Austin, subject to BPDA and PIC approval, in order to allow for the widening of the property's Gardner Street sidewalk from six feet, four inches to eleven feet, which will include a new tree pit and permeable paver strip with a seven-foot clear sidewalk in compliance with complete streets. That, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Okay, thanks for the complete presentation. Um, so there's no roof deck, um, artist-live-work, average of seven-forty-one square feet. Okay, um, I did have a question, but it slipped my mind. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good. I think, uh, it is consistent with the three other abutting buildings on the corner to anchor this. I think the landscape is actually quite. I think the landscape is actually quite nice. No other questions. I think that 21% IDP is also a nice thing that is coming to us. So no questions from me on the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Maransy, I just wanted to confirm, is this proposed to be rental?
Yes, I did mention that in my introduction. It's proposed as a 14-unit rental building.
Okay.
And actually, there would be, I'm sorry, and just on the parking, there'd be seven spaces. I wish to correct myself. So there is a lift stacking system being proposed. So that's seven parking spaces in the four slots, but there'd be seven spaces, one surface and six unlets.
And I think the next question is, we've seen a lot of these properties make, ensuring that they go on the market as rentals during, not during the school year or, you know, peak rental season for students. Is there such a thing in place for this proposal?
I can either ask my client's representative, Jacob Simmons, to speak, or I can represent that my client, CRM, works very closely with all the communities where it has rental units, particularly in Alston and in Brighton, on those issues. And, you know, this is not a building that will be actively or otherwise marketed to students, and my clients would take all appropriate steps in terms of the timing of the marketing of the units to ensure that the building population is targeting longer-term, longer-term non-student tenants.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. Our office conducted an abutment meeting on March 30th. There was a resident and a abutment attendant who had concerns regarding the density. The applicant went on to have several constructive presentations and meetings with the Alston Civic Association and achieved their support. The civic cited, they liked the look of the building and was pleased with the applicant's commitment to affordable housing for artists. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Pam Mulaney from Counselor Liz Braden's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support of this project. Thanks.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have a couple of letters in support and one opposition to the Mayor's Office spoken.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Duzidora representing the Alston Civic Association would like to echo all the comments made previously. This project was very attractive to our membership, and we would like to go on record in support.
Okay, Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. We are very pleased with the 21% affordable and the work that the proponents put in in working with the community. Thank you.
Tony, are you still on?
I am.
So, and Annabelle, you too. What strategies are in place so that this isn't a student rental building?
Well, Madam Chair, you know, all we can do, and you know, we've been pretty consistent with the proponents on this, that when we do have rental housing, we make it very clear that we do not want to see the property being used for student purposes. We've had some good results in the sense that some proponents have agreed to include language in the leases. I understand, I believe, up in Mission Hill and the Fenway-
I actually thought it was one on Cambridge Street in Alston, just down the street, but, you know, I may be wrong.
Yeah, but, I mean, there are some projects where language has been put into the lease, and, you know, again, we try to be as upfront about it as possible. We don't need, we don't need to give the institutions an excuse to continue to increase enrollment and just dump the students onto our community. So, again, we push for that kind of restriction.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Ambassador, does that cover everybody?
Yep. Jacob Simmons, were you looking to give testimony here?
Sorry, Chair members of the board, Jacob Simmons with City Realty, the proponent. We committed at the ACA and the BIA to no undergrads, and we're, our plan is to honor that commitment.
Thank you.
And then, no additional.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion with BPDA designer view.
Second.
Mr. Fortune? Mr. Ullott?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Aye.
Mr. Rogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris has recused himself. I too am in support. So this motion carries unanimously by all sitting voting board members. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the last case of the day, calling DOA 1173599, 535 to 537B, Washington Street. This is a change of argument to retail cannabis establishment. The violation is Article 51, Section 16. The retail cannabis establishment use is conditional. Name and address. Pull the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Ross. I am an attorney of law firm of Prince Lavelle at One International Place. I'm here with my client, Kobe Evans of Pure Oasis, who has previously appeared before the board and is an equity applicant. We deferred this case back in May of 2022, just two minor changes on the plan that we weren't able to get in on time to the board. We could start, sure, we could start here. So we are seeking a conditional use permit for the use of a cannabis establishment at this site. It's a straight conditional use permit. There are no buffer conflicts, and it's in an NS1 district. This slide here shows you what the current, it's closed, but what the previous historic use has been for this site at 535 Washington Street. It was previously swan cleaners, a dry cleaning. It sits on the corner of Washington and Fairbanks Street, and will have a corner entrance. I can, actually, if you could, Madam Ambassador-
Yeah, tell us which drawing we should go to to understand operation.
Yeah, yeah. Madam Ambassador, could you go to Slide 1, please? Thank you, just focusing on the right there. So it's a corner building, Fairbanks and Washington, corner entrance, separate exit. And in the back, you see four parking spaces. Those parking spaces are going to be for employee-only. This is an existing parking area in the back of the building, and deliveries will arrive through the rear of the building. I'll show you that in a moment. If you go to Slide 3 now, Madam Ambassador, I'm going to walk the board through the floor plan. So as you can see, you have about 3,500 square feet total of this first floor. The public-facing, you know, retail area itself is right there on the lower right-hand corner of the plan. You can see the corner entrance with the arrows, and then you can see the separate exit right there, kind of mid-building onto Washington Street.
So let's, you know, we've seen a number of these, so let's go directly to the specifics on this. So if you have four spaces and they're employee-only, how many staff are you expecting to have at any one shift?
You know, Kobe is on the line. He can give you a lot more detail. You know, we've submitted that we'll have between 10 and 12 employees at this site. This is a very small site, and even that might be a little bit much.
Okay.
He's currently operating one of these other facilities and in the process of opening another one downtown. So he has great experience on the ground, so we're happy to get more into the weeds if you have questions on that. This site here would be very small. There'd be five point-of-sale stations.
So how many, how many square feet is this?
So this entire floor here, including the rear of house, where the deliveries will come from, is 3,500 square feet.
Okay, got it.
The retail area is about a quarter of that. And then all the rest of the space is just dedicated to back of space, back-of-house space for storage vault.
So, so given that this is a small space, I'm assuming that the bulk of the business will be online, then?
Yeah, I mean, again, Kobe's the best source for this, but we're predicting about-
Okay, so let's, Kobe, put your name and address on the record, please.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kobe Evans, 430 Blue Lab, Pure Oasis.
And you're the one who runs the open facility that's open at Grove Hall, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I happen to be in the West End yesterday and walked by Ascend, and so got a sense of how these things operate in a city environment. I have not had the, I have not walked through your facility in Grove Hall, though I do drive by it fairly frequently. What I was kind of disturbed about was that that project on French Street came in as a minority applicant and is no longer a minority applicant very shortly into its time of operation. So I just want to find out what this, you know, this actually means. And Mr. Counselor Ross, you may have a deeper dive on this, because I don't know what the commitment is to the city and in your host agreement, you know, how long does it need to be minority-owned or minority-participate?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was the attorney on another project, and it's all public knowledge, so I'm not giving away any secrets. That was not a social equity applicant or a Boston equity applicant, as this one is. And the rules are considerably different, as enforced at the Boston Cannabis Board. And that rule is specific. For a Boston equity applicant, any changes of ownership have to go back to the board, and in no way, shape, or form shall it be less than 51%. Otherwise, they would lose their Boston social equity status. So they're different.
But let me ask you then, so a facility is up and running, it loses its Boston equity applicant status, what does that mean? I mean, it's data, it's running, it's, you know, what does that mean?
They would have to go back to the Boston Cannabis Board, and it would not be allowed to transfer the ownership without their approval. They have to approve it in order for the license to continue. And so that's why they've created a process for that. And I do not believe that they would, at this point, they haven't allowed any social equity applicants to sell out 100% of their assets. What you've seen up to now is just sales for the non-social equity applicants, or sales, like in the case of the folks for the Chavez Brothers, where they sold 49% of their interest, but maintained that other 51%, thus remaining social equity applicants.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for the question, Madam Chair. I did want to put on the record, Slides 5, Slides 4 is the basement. It's just storage, as it has been. Slides 5 through 8 will show you some renderings of the facility, just so you can get a feel for it. But what I did want to place on the record is all the way on Slide 9, and that is the McMahon Associates traffic study that was conducted. The engineers went out to the field in October, in November, and in December, and they looked at two key indicators, parking and traffic. And it was determined by McCann Associates that on-street parking would be adequate for the anticipated volume. They anticipated the volume to be approximately 300 people per day over the 11 hours. We're talking about a 10:00 AM opening, Madam Chair, to a 9:00 PM closing. So over an 11-hour day, approximately 300 customers, but only half of those customers would be arriving using a vehicle. The other half, including 35%, would be arriving, based on the traffic study, on transit. In this slide here, what you're looking at, the green shows the bike lanes. This is a very heavily biked area. And the blue lines show available parking throughout this neighborhood. It's undesignated. It's not listed as resident or non-resident. These are all undesignated parking areas. And we did, on the next slide, take a look at the historic parking patterns since, from all the way back to 2011 to all the way to 2020. These were randomly generated, and they support the findings of the traffic study, which just say that there's capacity at this site, and that's what they found in their analysis.
Okay, so, hold on, Mr. Ross. May I ask Mr. Evans, what are your hours of operation proposed to be?
I think we acquiesced on the closing time to, I believe, 8 o'clock, and we were opening at 10 o'clock, so 10 to 8.
So it's 10 to 8, how many days a week?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're anticipating that you will have 10 to 12 employees who will take, okay, and, okay, got it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, actually, and certainly show what the proponent has outlined in terms of their operations and locations. So no questions. It looks like they're actually also looking at exterior upgrades as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. D'Amico, I noticed you have your hand raised.
Yes, Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board, both D'Amico, BTV. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the parking plan on the drawn portion of it seems to be different than the actual photograph depicting the parking design. And secondly, is when I saw the actual parking some time ago, it was a dirt lot. Is it dirt or is it hothed?
I believe there's, so two things. One is there's an existing curb cut, and secondly, there is a considerable amount of dirt, and it seems to be over some sort of base there. I don't know if it's asphalt or concrete, so I can't tell you. But I do know from cutting the grass back there, there's a considerable amount of grass and dirt back there even now.
Madam Chair, ladies, I'd like to reduce the number of parking spaces. Just my suggestion, from four to two spaces.
And is that for, what is the reason, Mr. D'Amico?
Maneuverability.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, those were just employee spaces for the reasons that Mr. D'Amico pointed out. We recognize that with customers, that wouldn't be convenient, but for tandem parking, for, which parking is not required at this site due to the age of this building. But four spaces would be good for our employees, and we just thought that made most sense.
Yeah, and, you know, you just have to be cognizant that all the side streets are fairly residential, and you just got to think about community relations, and if that's a smart thing to have all that, everybody park on residential streets. Okay, thanks, Mr. D'Amico. Mr. Hampton, what did the BPDA recommend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in support, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We've recommended approval. Our only provision would be for signage.
Okay, okay. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. The Mayor's Office conducted two public meetings over the course of a long community process. The first was on April 20, 2021. We had an additional one after they were initially denied by the Boston Cannabis Board on February 17, 2022. They wanted to get, they went on to get support from the Boston Cannabis Board. At both of those meetings, overwhelmingly residents that attended were in opposition to this proposal. There was a lot of concerns regarding the proximity to the Mary Lyons Lower School, which is just outside the 500-foot buffer, as well as proximity to residential units being right next to it, concerns with the condition of the road, it slightly bends in an arc, which leads to some blind spots, as well as Langley Road, which is a very difficult street running directly into that intersection. Residents felt that it was incredibly unsafe and was not suitable. The applicant mentioned a traffic study. A lot of criticism from the community was that it did not take into account the impacts on a lot of side streets, where residents already struggled to park during certain hours of day, such as the proposed highest peak of customers attending this establishment, as well as concerns also with the proximity of the Oak Square YMCA. They went on to, the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association received opposition from that civic group, as well as letters of opposition from Brett Moran and Brett Ponin, which are the two local state reps from that area.
So, Mr. Newman, let me just ask you, so the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services has a policy of reporting the process, but not to- has a policy of reporting the process but not taking stand lately. So this is the second project. And if I'm, if I'm clear, the Mayor's Office is going on record in opposition?
Correct. I do want to mention just regarding letters that we've received. We had roughly 75 residents reach out from that immediate area. Most of them direct the butters that were in opposition from the applicant. We did receive 200 signatures in support. A good chunk of those were from Oak Square, with also the remainder being from the broader neighborhood. With that, like I said before, we wish to go in opposition. Thank you.
Okay, so I, okay, so the Lyons, the Lyons School is outside of the buffer zone and the YMCA is outside of the buffer zone, right?
Correct.
Okay, so then it means that there is an inherent conflict with what the neighborhood wants versus what the regulations put in as a buffer zone.
I would say it's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. So it looks like there are a lot of raised hands. I would like to hear from five people. And I need people who are direct abutters to the project. So that's, besides Annabelle Gomes who represents the BIA, I need to hear from five people who are direct abutters. Everybody else, please put your hand down. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Annabelle.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. The BIA voted to oppose the project based on the traffic impacts and the lack of parking. Thank you.
William, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is William Shookair. I'm the most direct abutter. I'm right next door at 539 Washington Street. Our properties are separated by 30 inches. I've written a lot of emails, I've done a lot of.
But just please tell us if you're in support or in opposition and what.
In opposition.
Okay.
But I'd also like to say.
What is it based on?
This is based on, well, first of all, in hearing the presentation today, it's a different presentation that they gave to the VCP and that troubles me. They showed pictures today of the outside of their building and I have sent you many.
Okay, Mr. Shookair.
Just that this is.
Please, please be respectful of what I've just said.
Okay.
What is your opposition based on? And I need bullet points.
Bullet points are that it's a heavily parked neighborhood by residents and this will take the parking from that. Pure Oasis will not provide adequate off-street parking and this will harm the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Second bullet point, I'd say, is security. My building is 30 inches away with an alleyway. I sent an email today. I am concerned from my first-floor tenants about breaking in and I don't feel that these, that this, I feel that this will attract persons who will use my building as a target and there are many places to hide around it. I strongly oppose to this and I've sent many emails.
Thank you. All right, Brett Moran, can we hear from you yet?
No, you haven't, no, you have not.
Go ahead.
For the record, my name is Representative Michael Moran. I've represented this community and this district for 18 years in the legislature. I would like to join the mayor of the city of Boston and my colleague from Austin-Brighton, Representative Honan, in opposition to this Pure Oasis. It is based solely on the fact that the, I saw the pictures that they showed you of parking. I don't know when they took those. It might have been during the pandemic. But I can assure you with Papa John and all the other businesses down there, it looks nothing like that on a day-to-day basis. We've just learned that they've cut their spots in the back from four to two. That accounts for deliveries and 12 employees and with no spots guaranteed for anybody of the 150 or so per day that are going to be coming there to shop. I want to join my butters, the BIA, and many people in the community in opposition to this and I would ask the board to deny this application.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bob D'Amico?
No, we're done, no, Bob, we heard from Bob. Let's just, and please, we have heard, we need to hear from four people and then I'm closing off comments. Only abutters, please.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the secretary here. I just wanted to echo the comments of the Mayor's Office. We do have those letters of support and obviously the letters of opposition as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Leanne?
Yes, I'm Leanne Brandon, 19 Langley Road. Been living here for 40 years, homeowner. I have to tell you that parking right now is almost impossible after 3:30 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon. The traffic survey and the report seems to indicate there's heavy bicycle traffic. I think I've seen five bicycles maybe a day on Washington Street. There is absolutely no parking for trucks. And one of the things that's not shown on their, on most of their pictures is that there's a fire hydrant right in front of it. All of the streets coming into Washington Street are one-way or are so narrow that only one car can go through.
Thank you. So we've heard about traffic. We've heard about the residential uses and a butter has talked about security. Can I hear from the next person? And please give us new information.
Sarah?
Can you state your name and address? Hi, my name is Sarah Lipson and I would just like to express my strong support of this.
What's your address, please?
141 Brook Street in Oak Square. And I just want to share my strong support for this as a black-owned business and I think something that would be a big benefit to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Celine?
Hi, yes, I'm Celineus. My address is 512 Washington Street. I am in support of this. I think that public transit and walking is still an option here. So yeah, I think that it'll still benefit the community in many ways.
Thank you. One more person and then we're closing off comments.
Yeah. Sarah, can I request any of you?
Hello, hello.
Yes.
Hi. My name is Sarah Robbosh and I live at 35 Langley Road in Brighton. And I'm calling in opposition to this, to the Pure Oasis, particularly because of traffic and safety issues. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to close off comment. Mr. Ross, Counselor Ross, any, any brief rebuttals, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we would ask the board to just take a fact-based look at what a conditional use permit requires and whether or not the applicant achieved its burden when it went out and had its traffic engineer conduct not one, not two, but three separate site visits of the location and came back with a finding that there is no nuisance or issue that would be created. Were this to be a variance case? Were this to be a case where you did have a buffer zone conflict? I think it would invite a lot more subjectivity and a lot more opinion-based comments like we heard and much more capacity for the board to make a decision based on that. But in the fact that this is a straight conditional use permit, opinion isn't one of the items that the board should be looking to in terms of deciding whether or not it meets the standard. So we would just ask the board to consider that.
Thank you. Okay, so please, everybody, put your hands down. Ms. Ambassador, can everybody be muted? And let's go for a motion. May I have a motion from somebody?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? There is, there is no second, so motion doesn't carry. May I have another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and so is that a design review into this applicant only?
Yes.
Yes.
And so there's a motion, a second. Let me just walk down the list. Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Aye.
Ms. Dong?
Opposed.
Mr. Rogiro?
Opposed.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Ligris?
Nay.
Okay, so there's already three opposition, so it's been denied. Okay? Thank you, everybody. May I just, may I just ask every board member to stay on for a minute? The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Recording stopped.